Six P M. Item number two, Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, Rules of Order. The city council meetings are conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order unless otherwise provided for and adopted by the city council at the annual organizational meeting in November. Before I go to the minutes, I would like to ask the council, I would like to do the awards right after the city manager's report.
Yeah, move to, move number nine to number four.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, I'm gonna do number four and then them, if that's okay? Because you said number four.
That's okay.
Yeah. Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meetings, February 12th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, March 18th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right. So we are going to jump to number nine, the presentation of awards. The first award is Sam Hughes, the Wrestling Coach of the Year.
This committee proudly presents a certificate of achievement to Sam Hughes. Congratulations to wrestling coach Sam Hughes, who was named Clough Valley Athletic Conference Coach of the Year at the League Championship Meet and Caribou. Congratulations.
Number two is Jim Goodman, the Boy Swim.
You know, that's my favorite. You guys school in the night. Forget the seats.
I can't get on my.
Okay. Number two is Jim Goodman, Boy Swim Coach of the Year.
I present a certificate of achievement to Jim Goodman. Congratulations to Ellsworth High School's swim coach Jim Goodman, who was named Clough Valley Athletic Conference Boys Coach of the Year.
Item number three is the Clerks Week proclamation for May 5th through May 11th for the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Okay. Proclamation. The 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th through 11th, 2024. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Michelle Beal, council chairperson of Ellsworth, do recognize the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Tony Dyer, and deputy clerks Ebony Cramp, Dowling, and Caitlin Miller for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated this 15th day of April, 2024. Congratulations. National EMS Week, May 19th to 25th. The 50th Anniversary EMS Week, May 19th, 2025, uh, May 19th to 25th, 2024, honoring our past, forging our future. EMS Week proclamation, I'm having a hard time with this one. To designate the week of May 19th to 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service, services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Michelle Beal, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 50th Anniversary EMS Week theme is EMS Week, honoring our past, forging our future. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Congratulations. There's only two left. National Police Week. Proclamation, International Firefighters' Day. Whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property, and sometimes that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years, and others it is many selfless years working in the industry, in all cases it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life, and whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their community's environments are as safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions, and whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year, May 4th, where we remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of all of us, and show our support and appreciation to the firefighter worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year, and whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting of recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of community. Therefore, we, the Ellsworth City Council, on behalf of the City of Ellsworth, now call upon all citizens to observe May 4th, 2024, and recognition of the patriotic service and dedication, dedication efforts of our City of Ellsworth firefighters. 2024 National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls and National, and National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Ellsworth play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifice of the law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Ellsworth Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service to our community, and whereas the Ellsworth Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedication, dedicated service to this community. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Ellsworth City Council, do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Ellsworth and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Police Week. Furthermore, we proclaim and call upon all citizens of the City of Ellsworth to recognize May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. National Public Works Week proclamation, May 19th to 25th, 2024, advancing quality, quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Ellsworth, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Ellsworth to gain knowledge and of, and maintenance, maintenance and ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, we, the city council, do hereby designate the week, May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And for some of those, I wasn't here early enough to sign them, so if you can bring them back to me afterwards, I'll sign them, sorry. Apologize for being late. Okay. Agenda item number five, city manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Beal, and thank you to council and staff and community for having me here. It's been a great couple of weeks. I, I'm really just, in some ways, impressed by the sheer volume of good works that happens at City Hall every single day. I think, took till Wednesday. Monday and Tuesday I was a little suspicious still, but Wednesday, Wednesday I was driving into work and was just, you know, so excited to get into the office and start doing things. So I think that's a good sign, and I've been excited every day ever since. Just a quick note on kind of happenings and scheduling items, the basketball courts over by Norton Park opened today. This Saturday, April 20th, is our Card Brook Cleanup Day, which is hosted by our, co-hosted by our planning department in the Frenchman's Bay Conservancy. If you want to, it's nine to noon on Saturday. If you want to show up, you don't have to sign up ahead of time, you can register over at the Hannaford parking lot, next to Clink, I think, is where they're doing the registrations. They'll give you all the equipment you need. If you have waiters, you might want to bring those along, if you want to go above and beyond in some of the cleanup pieces. Also, Heart of Ellsworth on April 25th, from 5:30 to 6:30 P M, is hosting the final workshop of their Historic Preservation Series. It's called Making Old Places New Again, and it's gonna take place in the Ellsworth Public Library, again, April 25th, from 5:30 to 6:30. They're gonna have some activities like how to repaint brick walls, restoring windows, integrating new systems to meet economic and climate resiliency goals. As somebody who owns a house from 1830, I think I may be showing up for How to Make My Old Place New Again. It's a constant struggle for me, so looking forward to that. On April 30th, there's, at 6 P M, there's an informational public meeting at the Hancock County Courthouse, or the, about the Hancock County Courthouse. So I know they're watching the previous council meetings and others, there's a lot of community interest in this. Very much encourage folks to attend, myself and members of city staff will also be going there. You can email questions ahead of time to info@courts.maine.gov, but that's on, again, April 30th. Also FYI, the intersection of Franklin and Store Streets are gonna be closed starting May 20th, as we prep the parklet for this summer. So again, that's May 20th is the last time, don't just be driving in there trying to get, get to the parking lot here. State and local elections are gonna be held on June 11th. Absentee ballots should start arriving in May. There's the annual roadside cleanup is in motion, and bags are available if you want to drop by City Hall at any time while we're open. You can pick up some free yellow trash bags, and we can assign you a road segment, sort of coordinate our efforts here. The clerk's office, we'd like to remind dog owners that we still have 100 dogs, potentially unlicensed in the city, so please ping our clerk here to get your dog licensed. It's also, it's boating season, and registrations expire December 31st, 2023, so if you plan on boating this season, please also see our clerk's office to renew your boats. And also another FYI, the fire department launched a citizen survey to inform folks about their strategic plans, so please check out that. So the, the happenings and, and dates, there's a few other kind of general things I want to talk about. One is job postings. We're, we just posted a planning and community development assistant job, that's now on our website for folks that are interested, you know, if you want to work with some of the Crackerjack team in economic and community development. I love working with these folks. They are amazing. They're really doing some really innovative, helpful things for the future of this city. So if you're interested in, in joining us, please apply. The other job which we hope to have posted by the end of the week is for the chief of police. I should also note that the reason we're posting that is due diligence, and I, it's part of my personal belief, every time there's a major department head opening in an organization, that we owe it to look into qualified candidates from a variety of backgrounds. However, that's not a critique of, on interim chief buyers, or beers, or Captain Wiley's, I have had nothing but the highest compliments for how they run that organization. We've had, I think, three or four pre-budget meetings, to our budget meeting coming up. They're incredibly detailed, strategic-focused, and not just when it comes to police or community items, but just in their general wealth of knowledge of the city, I've been really, really impressed with that group. So, which is going to say it'll be a high bar for whoever's coming in to take that on a full-time row. And some big projects, we've got some beautification efforts coming up. I know at the previous budget workshops on sort of how things went last time around, we really want to make sure that we're creating some alignment, and with spring coming, that we're putting our, our best city outfit on for the summer season. We're doing a big staff internal meeting later this week on our beautification efforts from City Hall, and then we're gonna start aligning with a lot of our community partners, Heart of Ellsworth, the Garden Club, and others to sort of see how all of these efforts are coordinated, and then we'll definitely report back on that piece. FEMA also, for those that did not see the news, they are, they've set up an office here. We met with them on last Thursday to sort of get all of our, you know, disaster potential reimbursements back from the January and December storms. There's also some, some potentials on mitigation, and if you want to build back to a stronger, to kind of handle for the next one, they will reimburse up to 60, or 75 percent. So we're kind of reviewing other assets in the city that may have been damaged by the storm that might be qualifiable for that, and we're meeting again this Thursday, and kind of have a running meeting with FEMA to make sure all the city infrastructure that was damaged is being reimbursed, and any mitigation efforts that might be eligible are being put in for. On the infrastructure note, I've had some great readings with our public works department. I know it's public, it's a public word, National Public Works Week, fantastic group of people we have here in public works. Thank them for all the work they did on hopefully our last storm of, of the season. We had some really good planning meetings on the potential water treatment plan replacement, looking forward to briefing council with those teams later this month on a pretty critical piece of infrastructure. And then, and then budget, budget, budget. You know, you've, you have the last calendar items for the rest of the month, to get those through, and we are laser-focused as a team to make sure that process goes smoothly throughout the next couple of months, and I could go on and on and on and on, but, you know, this is about hearing from you all, so I'm gonna stop there and kick it back over to Michelle.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to committee reports. The first item is the Solid Waste Committee, request to appoint Dinah Day and Gary Fortier. I'm assuming to the committee, recommended by the highway superintendent? Okay.
And the Solid Waste Committee as well.
Do you, okay.
I can make a motion.
Yeah. So this is just an addition, or do you want to do the whole committee?
It's just an addition of the two people.
Okay. Thank you.
So move to approve Dinah, I don't have it written for me, Dinah Day, Dinah Day, and Gary Fortier to the, to the Solid Waste Committee.
Discussion? All in favor? Do we have any other committee?
I have one report from Arbor Commission that on Friday, April 26th, at the Moore Center, there's gonna be a presentation by, that's at 7 P M, Friday, April 26th, by the American Chestnut Foundation, it's gonna be a viewing of their film called Clear Day Thunder. Welcome everyone to that.
Are there any other committee reports?
The RECA commission is working hard on finalizing budget for the April 29th hearing, including following last year's council recommendations to really hone in on some of the larger items like the budget funnel to the YMCA and other outside organizations, so we'll have a lot more information to share when the RECA commission comes in and shares that Solid Waste Committee. It's going great, we'll hear from Adam later, I think, with the e-waste update, and that's exciting. I think we're gonna be working on an ordinance change for that, that committee to start honing in on, on other projects, and, oh, I finally got to go on a plow truck ride-along. I recommend it for the next storm or next year. You do tremendous work out there, it's a lot of fun watching all the levers get bolted. You got a question out in the audience?
It's really difficult to hear in the back, so if you could just elevate your voice level a little bit, so that we can catch all of yours.
Then there's also a couple of seats down here in the front.
But there's a whole lot of us in the back.
No, I, no, I'm just saying if you'd like to sit, there's a couple, there's some seats available too that are closer.
That's all for me.
Are there any other committee reports? So the next item is citizen comments. This is a time when we ask, or anyone that would like to, that's a resident of the City of Ellsworth, can come up and make comments to things that are not on the agenda. If you would like to comment something that's already on the agenda, we ask that you please wait until that agenda item, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak, and then you hold your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
John Monahan, 157 Shore Road in Ellsworth. I've been out of state for the last week visiting grandchildren, and I returned in here in the good old city of Ellsworth, and I've run into just two or three people on the streets that are concerned about high taxes. When I ran for the council last time around, that was my number one issue, is I'll be running this fall, it'll be for reducing taxes in the City of Ellsworth. I had three people this week, just in the last couple of days, come up to me. One person told me he's not paying taxes anymore in the City of Ellsworth till they foreclosed on his house. He's so upset with the way the spending's going on in the City of Ellsworth. I talked to another lady just this afternoon, that said she and her husband are residents here in the City of Ellsworth, they just bought land in Dedham, they're moving up there, and they have a contract, they're building a home, and they're moving out because of taxes here in the City of Ellsworth. Then I had one other lady, didn't talk to me directly, but through somebody else, that talked about building an apartment house in the City of Ellsworth, and the cost of the extra regulations by the City of Ellsworth, which they felt were unnecessary, boosted the cost of their project $100,000. So they're probably not gonna build it here in Ellsworth. So I will be running for the city council this fall, and I pledge one thing, I will vote no on anything. It's easy to reduce taxes. I know some of you disagree with me in that there. Obviously, by the votes you make on some of the issues. You reduce taxes by reducing spending and reducing expenses. That's simple. You have to be disciplined to do it. I do it in my own home, I'm sure most of the taxpayers in Ellsworth do the same thing, and I encourage the council, every month as we take up spending issues, to really give it some concern, because I believe there's gonna be another tax revolt here in the City of Ellsworth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Anyone else like to speak? Item number eight, council comments. Anything the council would like to speak on that's not on the agenda? Counselor Helen?
The request from the lady in the back, that's not the first time I have heard that from the citizens of Ellsworth, that it's hard to hear in this room. I think I've heard that a handful of times in the last few years. I wonder if there is some microphone turn-up, or some voice enhancement, or something to make this a little more audible for the people in this room. I've heard that a handful of times, and tonight is the first time we've heard it in our presence. But I would, I would like to see somehow or some way that we look into making this room more audible. Maybe it's through electronics, I don't know, but maybe we need to have microphones on the collar or something. I don't know, but it, it's not the first time I've heard it, and I like to see the room full, and I'd like to make sure everyone can hear.
Are those not microphones inside of where you're sitting?
They are.
You can go to the YouTube channel, the channel that's broadcasting this live. But let me talk to Jason, I'll see if these mics, these speakers can be.
They can go to the house, it's just they haven't for a while.
Next council meeting, you'll either have an update and you'll start hearing it louder, or you'll have why we can't.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Item number 10, public hearing in action on the issuance of business licenses. I'm going to list off the businesses for the public hearing, and then I'll open the public hearing, and anyone may speak on any of the businesses that I list off for licenses, and then I'll close the public hearing and the council can vote. So the following businesses and their licenses are, will be part of the public hearing. Crestwell Investments LLC, DBA Finn's Irish Pub, 156 Main Street for new city class B license, amusement, Victor Lurker Liquor and renewal of estate restaurant, class three and four malt venus liquor license. Ellsworth Number One LLC, DBA Hampton Inn, 6 Down East Highway for renewal of city lodging license. Ellsworth Moose Lodge, 2698, 47 Foster Street for renewal of a city class B license, Victor Lurker liquor amusement, and a renewal of estate liquor license. Rockbound Management LLC, DBA Twin Hill Cottages, 210 Twin Hill Cottages for, I think that's supposed to be 210 Twin Hill Road. That's okay, 210 Twin Hill Road for renewal of a city lodging license. Yuki Abra LLC, DBA Finelli's Pizzeria, 12 Down East Highway for renewal of a city class C license and renewal of estate liquor license. American Dream LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, 211 High Street for renewal of a city class C license and renewal of estate liquor license. and renewal of estate liquor license. Crazy Sumo LLC, 75 High Street for renewal of a city class C license and renewal of estate liquor license. Riverside Cafe, 151 Main Street for renewal of a city class C license and renewal of estate liquor license. So I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of these licenses? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve all of those licenses.
Discussion?
All paperwork is good standing, all around?
All in favor? The next license, we'll also have a public hearing. Sanctuary Inn Investors LLC, DBA Sanctuary Inn, 33 Birch Avenue for a new city lodging license. Before I open that public hearing, I would like to hear from the city manager, who has been in meetings on this.
Thank you, Chair Beal. Yeah, and in response to a lot of the citizen comments, also concerns from the council, you know, I've spent a lot of the last week and a half doing a review of the situation and to sort of learn what's, what the process is here. I think there's a process improvements that we can make as a city, but I figure I'd start her off by kind of setting the table with, you know, how, some of the interactions and kind of where we're at from here, and some process improvements I think that need to be made before obviously open up to citizen comment, which I think is important, too. Just a little review, you know, last year there was an ownership change of this facility, which had been operating as, you know, some short-term rentals prior to the new owner. When the new owner, you know, and I believe he's here, I believe so, oh, I won't do, yep. And we've discussed as well, so be able to clarify for this, but that we met with city hall staff from our code divisions and others, and I think the assumption originally was that this was sort of a taking over of a business and a license, and that a new license wasn't needed. I know staff in some ways implied that there's really no further action, that they met up to code. There were some further interactions on what our general assistance policies were and how they would relate to this business. So they could, in some ways, from all intents and purposes for the owner, going through the year, his license was an owner. I know he owns other facilities in different states.
Can you speak up, please?
Sure. I'll speak to this way. It's the community, so.
One more point, one more point.
Yes.
A microphone like you have is supposed to be used close to your mouth. That's why we're not hearing you. You're all on the line and you're all sitting back to an F. It needs to be close to your mouth.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and I don't think these are going to the speakers, but so I'll try and project.
I checked with Jason a few minutes ago when they are.
Oh, there now? Can you hear him? Check, check.
There you go.
All right, is this a little better?
There we go.
Okay. I'm going to start over, if that's all right. So I've been reviewing this for about a week and a half and thought I'd report to the community on, you know, the...
Get back up a little bit.
Okay. Okay, all right. I think, how are we doing in the back? We're doing okay in the back? Everybody's good? Okay. So I've been reviewing this with staff for the last week and a half or so. I figured I'd give kind of a recap of what I've learned. Also, obviously, want to continue to hear from the community and council and answer any questions here. But sort of summation, there was an ownership change of the facility last year. I think there was some expectation that this was just a transference of the ownership or of the license that was already in place. I know our staff with code sort of reviewed the facility, found it to be up to code, informed other staff that it was up to code, and from the business owner's perspective that all licensing was in order as of last year. The, starting in January, I think we received a notification that the business was operating without a license. Staff moved to review that and, essentially, I think through a lack of communication, they realized that they did need to have a new application for a license. They reached out to the business owner, who showed good faith the entire time to apply as quickly as he could and to work with our relevant code, fire, clerk agencies to get paperwork in order. Again, there was also a technology change during this timeframe, so actually delayed by a month the time when, you know, this could have been brought into council, I think, a couple of months ago, if we would have worked a little faster. And so, which is why we're on this, this meeting now. I think, having reviewed it with all of our clerk, code, fire, police, they do not, we do not have any issues with the license being granted from that perspective. I will say, at least from the code issues, fire issues, police issues, at this time, they are, you know, in compliance with, you know, all of the necessary requirements with payments. It is a provisional license based on some parking potentials, so under their current parking parameters, you know, if they were to get more parking, they could be eligible for more people to be housed there, but, so that's the one provisional piece of it. I should also note that in terms of policy, process improvements and potential policy and ordinance changes, I do think, having reviewed this for the, you know, pretty extensively, that there are. I think we, as a staff, kind of missed the mark a little bit. We need to improve communications, make sure that, you know, when any kind of business is, is applying for something like this or is coming in an ownership change, we have to do due diligence. Our general assistance needs to do a business license check, you know, and we need to just cross-communicate a lot better. Also, I think in terms of reviewing our, our housing, our lodging ordinance, it's about two sentences long. I think that's probably due for a review, maybe potential for some more action there. Short-term rentals as well, I know that there's been some considerations for if we should be proposing some regulations there. I think this could in some ways be linked, that might be worthy of further inquiry. And then also, this isn't the end of it, you know, even if council were to approve a license today, you know, that if public safety were to dictate, you know, a revocation of licenses always within the city's power, depending on kind of where we're at. So that's, that's where I'm at now, and happy to field additional questions or bring in staff, or I don't know if you want to hear from the business owner, too.
So I have a list of new regulations that were sitting here. Can somebody explain?
Yeah, the, I shared Armelindo with the house rules. I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about it. I know you've, you've expressed, you know, your interest in really making sure that they stick to that.
Can you come up to the, sorry, just state your name, too, please?
Yeah, so, hi. How you doing? In terms of the house rules, I put the house rules there because I have people that...
Sorry, it's, it's the business owner of the property.
I have an introduction so we know we also...
Oh, I'm sorry.
People could please raise your hand and not holler out from, it would be, it's rude to interrupt someone. And I will acknowledge you if you put your hand up, but hollering out from the audience is disruptive, so please. And I, and yes, I'll ask him. Can you please state your name and who?
Yeah, so my name is Armelindo. I'm the representative for the Sanctuary Inn on 33 Birch Ave in Ellsworth, Maine. So I hear everybody's concerns. I wasn't here at the previous council meeting. I wasn't aware. But I have set rules since we started, I set rules for the tenants there that they have to sign when they move in, that there's no smoking in the property. I have no control what they do outside our property. There's no drinking, there's no alcohol, there is curt, visiting hours, you know, there's a, they can't, you know, bring microwaves, cooktops in the rooms, it's not allowed. You know, I've taken steps to hear, to the people's concerns. I've moved the dumpster, I'm fencing the dumpster, I'm doing a site survey of the land so I can add more parking spaces. I have kicked people out that don't follow the rules and that have been a disturbance to the neighbors and to the residents of the Sanctuary Inn. I'm trying my best to do them as quick as possible. And, you know, any concerns, I am happy to hear you out and take care of it. I do hear the neighbors, and I want the neighbors to be safe. I want them to be happy, as do I. I want to be happy, and I don't want to ruin the property that I purchased. So I hear their concerns, they're also my concerns, and we had a rough start, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I am now going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this agenda item? Step up to the podium and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Joe Susi. I actually reside at the Sanctuary. The opportunity that was created here for a lot of us was a chance to get back on our feet, to rebuild our lives. I've been able to rebuild a solid relationship with my daughter because I've had a safe place to be able to bring her. I've been able to find employment, give back to the community by working and making purchases locally. And having this place open is very meaningful for a lot of people. There's people who live there with children. You know, any issues that have been there have been dealt with by the staff. You know, there's a lot of things that I know our neighbors complain about, and we've been trying to address them as much as humanly possible. You know, keeping this open for a lot of people is giving them the second chance they need to rebuild their lives and become solid parts of the community. And I very much appreciate the opportunity I've been afforded there. I've been able to find a solid job. I've been able to rebuild that relationship with my children. I've been able to give back to the community in some small ways. Taking this away from us, quite honestly, would be a cruel thing to do, because that puts a lot of people back in harm's way, back out on the streets, where we're working very hard towards rebuilding their lives. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, I'm just not really sure what else to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, oh, I see her.
Several people, actually.
Okay.
My name's Susan Obdike. I spoke at the last meeting. We have, I live on Park Street. I don't know how things are right now, but I know that up until very recently, smoking, drugs, alcohol, were all a part of the environment at the Sanctuary. There is a evergreen tree that, there's four in a row along Garden Street. Under the fourth one is, is quite a few little Nipps bottles. And to get there, they had to be sort of put in, you couldn't get through the branches if you threw it from a car. So I see the, it's still continuing. My biggest concern, and I certainly support this gentleman who just spoke, is that there needs to be structure and treatment available for people there. There has not been, up until recently, if, if even now, there has not been somebody to provide any kind of structure or to make sure that people are abiding by the rules that exist, that apparently exist, but we have outside, external evidence showing that it doesn't. People gather on the porch, is it a covered porch there, at all hours. I happened to be up streaming a lot, a television show, and I was out on my porch, which faces up towards that porch, at two o'clock the other night. And I could hear voices coming from that porch at the Sanctuary at two in the morning. So I, I would like to see that people who have issues and people who have specific issues that need support and, and treatment are able to get it because they don't. There are people with mental health issues, I'm not clear that if they are taking medication, if it's prescribed, or if it's prescribed. I am not clear on people being held accountable for behaviors. There was apparently, there have been fights in the past there. I can't speak of today or tomorrow because they haven't happened yet. But thing, and there have been several overdoses there in the, you know, in the previous months, which is why we have gotten to be so upset about the building, because even though it is wonderful for people to be getting their stuff together, they still need support, and they may need some guidance in filling out paperwork. So, and one other thing is that the maintenance manager who is there, or at least has been there for, since the beginning of the year, is a convicted sex offender. We have two daycare centers, one across the street and one right behind that property at the Y. It seems to me that, I know that Maine itself has a law that sex offenders do not have to report. People do not have to be informed if there are sex offenders available around in the neighborhood. But with two daycare centers right there, it, it doesn't seem really feasible to keep, to have that situation happen. Now, I realize we're talking about specifically the Sanctuary, but I realize there are other places in town that are also opening up. And I would suggest that, that as a whole, there is a whole protocol put into place for providing support and, and a structure to keep the people success-driven rather than falling back. And I understand about...
I'm sorry, just cut you off, but you're at four minutes and...
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
But thank you very much for speaking. I, we appreciate it. We really do. Thank you.
I'm Patrick Dembo. I'm a resident at the Sanctuary Inn. It's going to be very, very brief. I just want to ask the credibility to the accusations that I just heard, because, I mean, I've been around a little bit and I haven't seen, you know, a pretty substantial amount of what was just expressed. And also, I'm pretty sure it's state of Maine law that every sex offender has to register on the registry. And if they don't do so, they are actually penalized by whatever county they're in. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
My name's Deborah Hanson. I actually am representing our Treatment Court and Treatment and Recovery Court process that we have here at Hancock County. We have three residents at the Sanctuary who we are held at a higher standard within our community. We do get treatment. We are randomly tested. We have classes we take. We are put in a place where we have to be accountable. We are held very highly accountable for our actions, whether we use or we don't. Our success rate with Treatment Court is at 78% right now. Yes, unfortunately, if there are people placed there through other, you know, programs we have in the community, it's very hard to do a massive background on these people. They, they're needed to have a place to live, they fill out the application, they're approved. It's, we don't have that control over what they do. But losing the license or not approving the license for the Sanctuary is going to put other people who have worked very hard on treatment, putting their lives back together, being able to be positive, productive members of the community, giving back to our community, it's going to put them at harm's way. It's going to put them in a position where they're not going to be able to do that, and they're doing that now every day. They have one-on-one counselors, they do have treatment. We are, we see a judge two week, you know, twice a month. We're held accountable. It's not easy for everybody to get the treatment that they need, but there are a lot of people right now in your community that are. And the Sanctuary has actually been a big help for that. If we lose that Sanctuary, these people aren't going to be able to continue to be a positive person in the community. Treatment Court is helping with that. Ari's helping. With Treatment Court and providing a safe place for that. If he doesn't get the license, then these people are going to lose that opportunity, and you're actually setting them up for failure again. And that is something we're trying to remove from this area. We're trying to provide the chance for these people. Me, myself, one of them, I'm 431 days sober today. If it was not for... If it wasn't for Treatment Court, if it wasn't for the help of Ari having that building, it might not have happened. So out of everything, I understand that you can, it's a process. We work this process every day. I've been working it now for over a year. It is possible. Taking that license away from him, it's not going to be possible anymore.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Did you want to stand up and speak? Can you identify? I thought we did, but...
My name's Deborah Hansen, and I'm one of the representatives for Treatment Court, Treatment and Recovery Court here in Hancock County.
Thank you. She did. She said that, didn't she?
Well, I came, I came with...
I'm sorry, can you state your name and...
My name is Judith Felch, and I live at 43 Birch Avenue. And because I'm a teacher, I came with visual aids and a pointer. I just want to, I want to incorporate what has just been said. And I think this is speaking very much to this whole business of 33 Birch because everything that Amalindo has said involves his hoax, things that he is saying, "I'm going to do." And the individuals he's now brought in so far, it has been quiet. But there, there are not guarantees that we will not return to what happened. And thank you for talking about the people who are being helped and all of that. I just, before I go any further, I'm trying to make my comments no more than about four, maybe five minutes. I have a person that's going to yield her three minutes to make, so I'm going to talk as fast as I can. But I have to speak on some of the things that happened to us because they could happen again because I do not see Amalindo living here in that house. And Amalindo, people are smoking out on your front porch every single night. They're smoking pot and they're smoking tobacco. How do I know? I know it's legal, but I'm breathing it. I live across the street and prevailing ocean breezes are...
You can speak to us and them, but please be afraid from home.
...in my back door and front windows. Okay. Anyway, I love my neighborhood. However, in the space of the last six months, our committee, our community has been ravaged. And after demanding some relief at last month's city council meeting, there was a response. So what I've done is I spent the last month researching how this happened, and these are the Cliff Notes of what I found. Number one, I kept finding, "We didn't know. We didn't, I didn't know I was supposed to apply for a license. I didn't know this. I didn't know that." Well, this won't help. That will give you new information. There it is. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. If we have to take this to litigation for whatever reason, forget it. This isn't going to help. Ignorance of the law. So let's move into this business of, can you hear me if I stand over here?
No, it has to be up to the microphone.
I'll do what I said to do. I will speak into this. Number one, no person shall operate a lodging house without obtaining a license. The fact of the law is, it was. It was operated for eight months without a license. That is, again, according to the framers of our rules, it can succeed in denying the permit. That's, it's stated over and over again. Okay, so we'll move on. This next one is that you have to have the number of rooms plus two for parking spaces. So that's 30 parking spaces. Amalindo has just said that he's put in to have an architect draw out 30 spaces. We've already seen what the traffic is going to be with that number of cars coming and going and the sounds coming and going. We've already seen that. And I know the space, and that probably will involve cutting down all the trees, the one tree they have in front and all the trees on the side. So I would like to ask the planning committee to review this plan, and I would like the community to see it, the plan for, because the planning committee is gold standard. They have a relationship of what has to be green space. They know what the size of the parking spaces have to be. They know about density of cars coming and going. That's what I would want to see where, to be able to have 28 rooms. The other option is that the owner cuts the rooms down, that does exactly, cuts the rooms down to maybe 14 and then puts in, he says he has 17 parking spaces, so you reduce the number of rooms. This next one has to do with parking. Right now, they're in violation of the layout of parking. There are no parking spaces. People come in, two and three D, coming and going. They're in violation of this. And then the second thing has to do, if there's a breach of peace or it constitutes a menace to health, safety, and welfare. I have to say that this has been a nightmare, and all of these things are true. And if we have to have a judicial finding, we will have a book of testimonies. Now, if however many people who are over there, families and all, it's quiet, it is, it's quiet. People are coming and going. It's quiet. So whatever that number is, that's working. However, let's move to the next one, the Ellsworth Government, because these are the, these are the people who are involved with us, community, Ellsworth Government. You all gave, okay, slow down. I don't know where it went. I had the amount here. Anyway, it was $42,351 has been given to the Sanctuary. And I think it's wonderful that the government has, and I'm grateful for the funds that are given to support homelessness. I'm grateful that we have these funds. But unfortunately, Ellsworth is in sort of a tricky situation because of this. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. You didn't know that they didn't have a license, but you did it. So that's, that's the law. You gave money to an unlicensed person. And the second jeopardy that I've researched, because I spent the last month researching these things, is you could also be liable for losing funding because of this. So all I'm saying here is all of the United States, people are buying properties, and they're turning them into centers, either for drug addiction help and for people coming in, for homeless. That is wonderful. But if there are not new ideas, if we're still in the past for the government, for the planning, for the owners, we're in trouble. All of this can happen. It's like the Wild West. So I am, this is an encouragement to take the funding and do some things to get some real planning done to prepare for this.
Okay, I do need to, you're at eight minutes, so I've given you quite a bit of time, so I'm sorry.
Eight?
Eight minutes. Yeah, you have a timer.
Can I just do one more thing? I'm just going to do one more thing, very quickly. I have to, I have to do this one because Acadia supplied the people. I know they said they didn't, but they did supply it, and the people. And whatever people they were supplying, that caused the issue. So, and I called, nobody would talk to me. Nobody has talked to me except for the person who is the executive director. And she said, "We place. We are not involved beyond that." We can't have another drug house created because Healthy Acadia is placing endless drug-addicted people.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We appreciate your comments. I am going to hold people to three minutes, though. I'm going quite a bit over.
Hello. My name is Patrick Shea, and I live at 42 School Street. And thank you for the counselors that replied to my emails. I know you're a busy man fitting in, okay? Now, I live at 42 School Street. What does Birch Street have to do with me? I'll tell you what it has to do with me. It's in my realm, in the area that I live in. A lot of, and I empathize and I partially sympathize with people who have no place to go, and they need a place that's affordable. But the bottom line is, is rules are rules, laws, regulations. We have to follow them. It's no different. Nobody's exempt. And as like the fine lady said, ignorance of the law is no excuse, okay? I believe possibly there might be some compromise. But that's not for me to decide on the issuance of the law, of the permit for lodging. Obviously, there is a big problem, okay? Because individuals that don't follow his rules, and they may not be stringent enough, okay? I have short-term rentals, and I have extremely, extremely rigid rules because of where I live. I don't want to, I don't want to cause disruption to any of the neighbors in this area here, nor do I want it to affect downtown because they're staying at my place, all right? Now, I went with a higher-priced clientele. I'm sorry. I just, I feel the issue that there needs necessary housing for people that really can't afford. My heart goes out to you. But, and it's like you said, you have to follow stringent regulations. Very good. I applaud. That's a great treatment program.
I also have my own, I have my own business now, so yeah, I get it.
Yeah. So, but there are other, like she said, there's other treatment agencies that are sending people up there, okay? I finally have gotten a response from the issue from the other one that I spoke about that also is tied in with sending clients up there, okay? We're trying, I'm trying to do the direct approach like I've been doing, and maybe I'll give her a chance, okay? Maybe there'll be some changes. I haven't seen it yet, okay? To this fine gentleman that bought the place, he needs to tighten his rules up and needs to bring it before your body, okay? What he's going to do to make sure that he's a responsible landowner, a responsible tenant, landlord, okay?
Okay, you're at, you're at three and a half minutes, so thank you very much.
I am, I was hoping I was going to be just right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You've got to come to the podium, please.
Should be pretty quick, but I feel like, it's Charlie. I feel like in the beginning of you pitching this, you said that the...
Could you state your name?
Patrick Dembo.
Thank you.
I feel like you said that the discrepancy with the licensing was a miscommunication on both parts. It wasn't just him being ignorant of the law. So like, I just, I don't know. I kind of feel like the whole punchline to the argument ignorance of the law is no excuse. If it was miscommunicated to somebody who comes from a different culture and is paying a very large mortgage, who are you trying to hold accountable for these misallocated funds? That's the question I'm asking. Because if it's a miscommunication on both ends, I don't think that's on him to be held liable, I mean.
So, thank you. And we'll address things after the public hearing, but thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Paige Johnston, and I serve as the Community Health and Support Director at Healthy Acadia. I wanted to share a little bit of the work about Healthy Acadia. I know that's not the main theme here, but just to correct some misinformation and about our experience also working with the Sanctuary Inn. Healthy Acadia is a community health organization that works to address critical health challenges across Hancock and Washington County through partnerships, education, and public health services. Together with community members and partners, we work on a wide range of health issues, including early childhood development, strong beginnings, healthy aging, food access for all, resilience in basic needs, and more. As part of our broad range of work, we offer community navigation. That is what has been referred to here, I believe. And so as part of that, we offer referrals and linkages and connections to a variety of services, including primary care, behavioral health, counseling, dental, medication-assisted treatment, any resource really. A community member comes in that they may need to be connected to. They're looking for help, making that connection for something to make their lives more helpful. Our navigators have included the Sanctuary Inn on our list of resources, and we've also worked with Armalindo. We've seen him be very responsive. And so he's also one of the most affordable housing opportunities in the area. And just a little piece, as far as general assistance goes, you know, there's only really a handful of businesses that are willing to accept that low amount. And his business is actually the only one that will keep someone continually housed rather than just giving them a couple weeks or whatever, while people work to get themselves back up on their feet. And I'm sure you all realize the need for, the need for affordable housing and the housing crisis that faces our area. So in our experience with the Sanctuary Inn, we found the landlord to be responsive to challenges that come up. And we understand that he continues to put measures in place to work to build a safe environment for residents as well as neighbors. We empathize with the neighbors and their concerns, and we're also concerned about what would happen if this property closes and over 20 people end up unhoused. And we're also available and eager to be part of, to support solutions that make the neighborhood feel safe and also to keep people safely housed. Thank you for your time.
My name is Stephen Shea. I've got a cold and I have a little hoarse, so if you can't hear me, just say so, and I'll speak up best I can. First question I'd like to ask the representative from the Sanctuary is, are you the only staff member? How many staff members do you have on site?
On site, there's two. So there's three staff.
Do any of them have any professional training or any experience in handling people with social problems?
Yes. Our in-site manager, he is trained to do CPR, trained for... The in-site manager, he has the training. He's worked at a correctional facility. So he has training to deal with overdoses, with people not following the rules, and he knows CPR, so he's...
Can you come up, yeah, can you? You guys are having a conversation separate from everyone else. If you could stand up together or something.
Okay.
Or if you want to ask questions, and then he can respond after you.
All right. Yeah, I was interested because, you know, nobody on Birch Avenue or in the neighborhood doesn't understand that these people need a place to stay. But we also understand that a place to stay should be supervised and appropriate. And I, I just don't think the Sanctuary is. On the matter of not getting a license under confusion, I can't believe that. Section 308, Article 14, is clear. And I can't believe that somebody spent over a million dollars to buy a place and didn't have a lawyer search out the statutory requirements. That's just, in my mind, not possible. And it's also not possible that the city officials didn't know that was going on. That went on since sometime late spring, and they didn't realize, they didn't have a license, they claimed, until I came down and asked about it in September. If I hadn't come down and asked about it, they still wouldn't have known. I mean, I just think that's incredible. Somebody needs to be held responsible for that. Because how many police reports, how many police calls have there been up there? More than a couple dozen. And how many police report requests do you get from other facilities? Have you ever had a call? No, I don't think so. This facility operated and got set up without a license. Now that they're asking it to get a license, they're crying, "Oh, my gosh. We can't, you know, we can't live without them." I don't, I feel bad for the people there, but there must be other places in the area that could take these people until the Sanctuary... that could take these people until the Sanctuary gets organized and the city gets some regulations in place to properly house these people. Sooner or later, there's going to be something disastrous happen at the Sanctuary. I can guarantee you that. And you people are going to be responsible because you haven't done your job. I suggest that the city either temporarily suspend them, do something, and then start some regulations or requirements. Because they're not running a board and house. What have they applied for? A board and house?
So, yeah, you're at four minutes, so thank you.
That's not a board and house. It's a halfway house. It's a halfway house being run with no management.
Is there anyone else?
Darren Appley, live at 112 State Street. I had no plan on speaking tonight at all, I just wanted to come and listen. I have a lot of empathy and I do feel for everyone that's, that's at this facility and is doing the right thing. And congratulations on getting back with your daughter. That's fantastic. I'm not worried about the folks that are, that are here that are doing the right thing. I'm worried about the folks that might be there that aren't doing the right thing, that might be leaving the facility. And as he said, once they leave the property, he has no say, one way or the other, as to what occurs. That's a problem that I see with my kids just down the road and with the playground right up the road where folks go to do drugs in the playground. I've picked up containers that hold needles in the playground where my kids go to play. It's going to take one child, one child getting poked by a needle and getting a disease of some kind. Or perhaps a sex offender taking advantage of one of our children. That's going to be a major problem for this town. And I'll be the spearhead in making it be a problem for this town if that happens. It's just unacceptable. Again, I want to see everyone that needs help get the help, but it doesn't feel like it's been done right. And lastly, back to this thing which seems to be the, like OJ Simpson thing of the day. It's like the glove, I don't know. Sorry, it kind of lost my mental thought there. Yeah, I know, I shouldn't do jokes. You know, ignorance is, 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 is no excuse and that is true. But what, what we've done here is we've actually set up a precedent for folks setting up a business, doing the wrong thing first and then asking for forgiveness later. And then you're going to go ahead and give that approval. And I think that's a bad precedent to set in our city. I'm, I'm looking to do some things and I've been down here multiple times talking with everyone, trying to make sure I'm doing it the right way and following the rules. And I didn't know what the rules were, so what did I do? I walked down and I talked to folks to find out so I did the right thing. And I, I think that, that should be expected of everyone that's trying to do a business in this town, so anyway, thank you.
Hey. I'm going to spin off from what he just said.
Look, can you state your name, please?
I'm about to.
Okay.
My name is Melinda Sweat. Lived here my whole life. I had a big thing, I was planning on speaking, wrote a thing, and now that's changed based on what's been said now. We're all hooked on the ignorance of the town and the business owners, but we need to talk about the ignorance of our community. The ignorance of not recognizing our problems and not talking about it. And I'm exactly what he just said. I'm worried about our children. I'm worried about what's really happening, what's in the parks. This isn't just happening at Birch Ave. They are not isolated. This is everywhere. And just because you find needles in the park doesn't mean it comes from the people living at Birch Ave. These people are not part, are not your problems. A lot of those people are doing the right things. I am proud of them. They are seeking recovery. There is always bad with good. We need to handle the bad, make the bad responsible for their actions, and hold them accountable. Just all these tech, this, this, this muddying up the water with just the licensing. Sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker. We need to educate ourselves. We need to start having real conversations, supporting our community's recovery. Recovery comes from many areas. It comes from mental illness, homeless, poverty, and addiction. There is no class in this society that is not touched by these issues. And we need to figure that out, we need to talk about it, and we need to fix this problem everywhere. The Sanctuary Inn is not the problem. It's everywhere. And these people need a place to stay. They, they deserve safety. Everybody deserves the same level of human rights. And it just disgusts me that this is going on. We need to help our people, help our community, or Ellsworth is not going to get any better. We're going to continue to get worse. So we need to fix this issue and stop, stop this, help people. I mean, it's that simple. And like I said, I have a lot more to say, but normalizing social disapproval to allow discrimination and stereotyping should not be allowed.
Hello, Jason Buber. I'm a resident of Ellsworth. I'm a senior research scientist at the Jackson Laboratory where I research the genetic basis of disease. I study things like autoimmune disease, junctional dermatitis-bolosso, which is the worst blistering disease you've never heard of. I also study mental health and addiction, because addiction is a disease. And people have to recover and it's messy. It's not a clean recovery. I have strains of mice that will go on and self-administer cocaine, bad mice that will not even touch the stuff. There's a genetic basis. These mice aren't bad people that went to the wrong church and didn't go to church. These mice are genetically wired differently and then they get the exposure to a drug and that exposure can change it. I mean, we are all, we are all one Purdue Pharma oxycodone away from being them, they, us and them. We, we are the humans who are experiencing this, this opioid crisis, this mental health crisis that's affecting our whole community and our children. And by the way, we have resources. I know people have talked about how important it is that people have resources. If you do have a crisis, there's a walk-in clinic in Bangor that's open nine to 12 Tuesdays
Would anyone else like to speak before I close the public? I would like to hold it, it's, it's getting, I would like to hold it unless you have something completely different to say.
Well, I'd like to rebut what these people, these people love to accuse...
No, 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 we're not doing that.
Sir, sit down.
We're not doing that tonight, Steve.
Not being sympathetic. Everybody here speaking against the Sanctuary Inn has been sympathetic. What we say is you need a managed facility.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing now. This is, this is done, okay? Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, everyone.
I have, several requests.
You gotta talk louder because I can be able to hear you actually.
Thank you. Well, I've been quiet for a while here. I'll get my voice back. A couple of requests. Melinda Sweat, you had written a document that you weren't able to share. It should be easy enough to email it to counselors. I'd be interested in seeing everything that you had written.
Is it this regulations paper? Did you get this?
No, no, she had a piece of paper she referenced and that she didn't have time to cover it all. So I'd, I'd be interested in seeing more of what she said. And I don't know if Charlie for City Staff can respond to any of the concerns if appropriate, if there are police that can respond with an update on what have the trends have been on visits there. And I think another issue that was raised by several people is, how does Sanctuary Inn compare with other comparable places? So anything that would be helpful to our understanding and to the people who are here, I would welcome that from City Manager for Staff and for Police if that is possible.
Would you like to start?
Sure. On the, the, the police activity, I think in all of your packets, there's a list of, you know, complaints relative to the facility, you know, and conversations with the police department, you know, that they've not yet had caused, make any arrests. They're also in some ways limited by some DA, District Attorney guidance, or sorry, maybe Attorney General's guidance, I think.
Try to speak up.
Sorry, there's, there's, so the police reports relative to the facility are in the packets which are also available online. There have not yet been made any arrests and in conversations with the police department, this facility in comparison to other like facilities is not in any way over, above, and beyond that would require a barring of a license. So that doesn't mean that that's at this time, that that's the situation if it was a change and the police reports were to be different and there was a public safety threat relative to this facility itself as well, I think has been mentioned too. People outside of this facility and what can be regulated inside are different than just this facility itself, so I can, in terms of exactly how it compares to the others and what we made that basis of, but...
Trends is what I was looking for.
Trends, and there's, you know, there's other short-term facilities that, yeah, that have similar type ways. Chief, I don't know if you want to say anything else or if you think that that states it.
Hello, Troy Biers, the interim police chief. Just listening to everybody here. We had, we had taken down some of the, some information as of April 11th, from January 1 to April 11th. We had 23 incidents that were reported at the Sanctuary, 14 of those were responded to. Two of them are OD-related, two of them were sex offender-related, just following up on compliance. And the rest of them were just normal complaints that we see throughout the city. Nothing, nothing that really stands out, so.
Biers, I got the sense from reading some of those reports that a lot of those that you, that were responded to were called, oh, it got loud. Were called in from the acting manager of the location at the time?
Yeah, we had several...
Requesting assistance?
Yeah, we had several calls from the manager, asked us to, some of them were handled on the phone before we even got there that we didn't need to respond to. Some of them were, he had, had an issue with some fights. We went and assisted, broke him up. There was only one of those and we had, we assisted the fire department in a couple of, in the two overdoses stood by while they were taken to the hospital. We were there to serve some summages for another department. We were there to check on a protection order. Like I said, just not anything different that we see throughout the city. I'm comparably, I mean, I don't have, I wasn't prepared to compare, but we have complaints throughout the city at different locations, but what we've had is not out of the ordinary.
Thank you.
The other piece I think is on the licensing and the unlicensed period. Again, I, you know, during my inquiry, it became pretty clear that, that the owner was under the assumption, based on what we provided as staff, that he was licensed prior to us notifying of the unlicensing. So it was something that I did a lot of research into over the last week and a half because it jumps out as the big piece for potentially barring a license. But from our inquiry, you know, the owner, in fact, was told by us that he was, he was licensed prior to the re-notification, so that's kind of where we're at there. In, in general, I know a lot of the discussion about protocol for additional support staff, some of the House rules, I think in some ways, just to note that, you know, if counsel does choose to approve, that, you know, we're going to continue this conversation, I think, with Healthy Acadia and as a community, you know, on addressing some of these issues, you know, whether they're relative to Birch Ave or elsewhere. And same thing goes with public safety and all these other pieces. And as a staff, you know, my pledge is, you know, continuous improvement. We have to make, be better here. We could have been, we missed the mark a bit and we owe it to you all to be a little more responsive and timely here.
So, Counsel? Are there any other questions? Counselor O'Halloran?
I just have an observation. And maybe my observation isn't correct, but it seems that we're here tonight to talk about a bigger problem than licensing. It seems that the behavior on the streets is attracting everybody here tonight. I'm hearing about needles in the trees and booze in the trees and the parks and so on. So I, I think this has taken on a workshop approach as opposed to a council meeting, but I think it's very important. And I think really what I'm hearing is we're here to talk about a business license and there's a lot of confusion about this business license. But really, there's an aggravation about the traffic outside of the facility in the street and in the public spaces. So I, I think we're hearing some aggravations about this facility for sure, but I think we're hearing a bigger story here. We're not hearing just about the Sanctuary. We're hearing about things that are in every town, every single town. Go to Bangor, go to Bucksport, go to where you are, wherever you'd like to look at. There is a problem like this that we're experiencing, maybe for the first time. Maybe we've been held out of that loop for a while. So to speak to that a little bit, I would just like to say that perhaps, aside from, I realize we're talking about a business license, perhaps there could be some enhanced enforcement street-side of this behavior that may help whether this man gets a license or not. Isn't that what I'm hearing from some people, that they don't like what's going on, traveling to and from the Sanctuary? No, yes?
Yes.
It's just an observation, that I think that it's a bigger problem than a business license or a non-business license. And I would like to hear the story about this licensing that they thought they had and didn't need. I don't know where we're at as a city with that. I don't know it, how it is. But I could see that whether this man gets a business license or whether he doesn't, the problem exists in Ellsworth. We need, it's a bigger problem than a business license.
Anyone else? Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think, so as far as the matter before the counsel, it is a business license. I think our responsibility is to determine whether or not to approve it. This, to Counselor O'Halloran's point, this is a, it's just, you know, a symptom or a, we're seeing manifest a much larger issue in our society, in our community. And the council, we've held workshops on homelessness, we've engaged a lot of people in here on it, and it's an issue that all of us, it affects all of us in one way or the other, affects our community, affects our families, affects my family. And I think what the takeaway I have here tonight is that these folks that live in this building are part of our community. This property is zoned to allow for this type of use. We have licenses for this type of use. They've satisfied all the requirements of the license and that's where the, the city council's inquiry should end. But even if there have, and there have, and I understand that there have been issues with the neighborhood and I'm sympathetic, and, but to me, it seems as if the property owner is doing what he can to resolve and address these issues. And really here, this is all about second chances, the second chances for folks that are living there. And I think we give this business a second chance to show that they can operate properly and be an important member of our community. So I would encourage the city council to vote to approve this business license tonight.
Anyone else? Counselor O'Halloran?
Am I allowed to talk twice?
You can, yes.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
You have three minutes. Just kidding. You have three minutes. Just kidding.
Perhaps a compromise that, that might be considered would be this, supposedly this operation's been going on for months with no licensing. Is that fair to say? Code enforcement, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's been operating without a license. So, is a compromise to this issue tonight to postpone the licensing process? It hasn't been enforced to this point, correct? No one's gone up and tried to enforce this situation. Is it possible, and I'm not, I'm asking, okay, is it possible that this get a 60-day window for staff and everybody in the community to have another night to discuss this process before this man is given a business license? However, if you're not enforcing it now, let's, if that is the wish of the council to allow a little more time for this process, I think we have to understand that we need to let him continue to operate during that 60-day period. It's a question, it's not a request.
So, can I, I'm going to just kind of answer that for, and then you tell me, Lori. But no. We now know that this is happening and we, they've worked very hard to, to make sure that he's in compliance and to allow someone just to work without a license. It's terrible and it just is not the way to go. But it is a conditional license anyways, correct?
Yes.
Because he doesn't have enough parking. So, it's already a conditional license?
What I'm offering is that the parking, he doesn't meet right now until he can remove some trees and create more spaces. So, he has enough space to have 16 units with two for his employees. And that's what I'm giving him a partial site compliance certificate on.
So, to have just that amount of...
Yes. It's all he can have is that amount of rooms because that's all the parking he has.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, it's not a conditional license. It's a license for that. Will he, will he have to come and reapply?
No, no, no. What he'll have to do for me is, once he creates those spaces, then I can give him a full site compliance letter.
Okay.
I'm picking up extra papers that weren't mine.
Thanks, Lori. So, yeah. So, just to follow up on that, I think the owners of, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I don't have the license in front of me, the permit.
My name, Armelindo.
Armelindo. So, Armelindo has created new regulations for the, for the facility. He's made, you know, many comments and I'm going to take him as promises that he's going to have the staff, the staff will have his residents, you know, complying and working with the neighbors. And I do encourage you to work with the neighbors. But I think the other big thing is, is that these licenses can be revoked.
Right.
So, and, and I know that one person was saying that things are good now, but there's no guarantee they will be later. There is no guarantee that's for any business that, that's in the city of Ellsworth. However, we do have the ability that if things go back to the way that they were and we find that there, there's creating mayhem in that area, that we can revoke the license. So, I'm comfortable with the promises and the cleaning up that you've done and the quietness that there has been there not to postpone the license, but also I'm encouraging people to approve the license. I don't want to make these people move for 60 days and we can't, I don't, we can't allow people to live there now that we know about it and everything has been worked on with code enforcement and police and fire to knowingly not allow someone to have a license. I don't think that's, that can be done, so... Councilor Smith?
Thank you. I want to make just a couple of points. I want to start with the fact, I want people to know that I think each and every counselor has taken this very seriously. We've done research. We've had conversations. We've tried to understand what's going on, appreciating the neighborhood perspectives, appreciating and valuing the services that happen to people who are struggling and making advances with their lives. It's interesting, the one idea that I had thought of in, in research and looking for options is learning that you could have house rules with this kind of a license, which you can't with other kind. And then to arrive tonight and find that it's already been implemented, I find it as a wonderful positive step in what we're trying to manage here. The second point I want to make is that housing is key to successful treatment. Step one, if people have a safe place to lay their heads at night, to be with their families, everything else is possible. Without that, for the most part, it's not possible. It's already been said several times, this affects all of us in several ways, whether it's your family, your friends, your community, it, it is affecting all of us. And then finally, the point that, that Chair Beal made, a license isn't permission to do whatever you want. A license is a tool for compliance. And we have a pledge from the property owner. We're hearing from some of the residents, the difference this is making for them, hearing support from the community and the concerns from the neighborhood, that the license is a tool we can use if we move forward and there continue to be issues. So, I intend to vote to support the license for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. Just speaking on just the license component, things can get very complicated as we've seen this evening with any, with any business license, with a lot of the agenda items that we deal with. So, we simplify things for the council often by, by trusting the city's departments and the city's staff, by trusting code enforcement and fire. If they are boots on the ground, they go in, they check that everything is up to code. You know, we trust the, the police reports when they say, you know, they have this relationship with the manager. The manager sometimes requests assistance in removing tenants that need to be removed. This is an act of compliance in my eyes. So, you know, this first question of, should it be licensed? I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason logistically not to. I do hear a lot of the, for Chatham and the folks and the other neighbors, it's a messy process. You know, we had this homelessness workshop a couple of months back and we learned about it. And it's one thing to talk about it in abstract terms, it's another thing to deal with the minute specifics of it. And we find that things get messy and they require conversations and they require talking to neighbors and they require rules and creative, creative outlets and creative solutions. And I think that's a great place to move from here, but where we start is with the license, in my opinion.
Do we have a motion? A motion, person?
Move to approve the license for the sanctuary.
Second.
Further discussion? Councilor O'Halloran?
Just one, one more comment. And I don't want to see anybody not having a roof over their head, but I, I think that there's more talk to be had to make this all come together.
I would agree with that. I do, I encourage the residents to, to help with the other residents and make, and help with the compliance issue and with the owner. We really do encourage you to do that. And, you know, I think it would be really great if your staff got to know the neighborhood and you worked with that neighborhood to ensure compliance and that you ensure that you don't negatively affect the livelihood of that neighborhood, so...
Councilor, I'd like to, if this gets approved tonight, to see some more police presence in the area, maybe some more, more advice. I'm not sure what's happening now, but to be able to make the community a little more comfortable in that neighborhood.
Can I comment to that?
One more.
One more. Okay. All right.
You're limited.
I'm done. Okay. I just wanted to, to say that that's, that's the point that I think that some of us are missing and some of us aren't, that, you know, if, if it's, it's the drug activity on the street that we can all see. We can't see what goes on at this house. We can't see what goes on at another house. It, it's the streets, the parks. It's not just sitting outside of the business that we're talking about. It's in the street. It's in that area. I think that's where we need the police.
And I'm going to do one more. And I will tell you that the, the place that I work, it's the people without help and without a place to go that are in the parks and that are making the mess and that are causing the mayhem. So, I really, really hope that this works and it does give a, a place because I think it will help keep the needles out of the park and off the streets. Okay. We have a vote? We have a first, a first, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor? All opposed? And moving on to item number 11, discussion and potential action.
Let people file.
Oh, yep. Thank you.
Can I, can I quote, quote on your mic? Maybe?
Thank you. Lovely sound. Thank you. Gosh. Yeah, but, no, I appreciate that. Oh, God, my hand right here.
See, Ashley?
Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to, we're going to take just a couple-minute break.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, you're coming in to do this?
No, no.
Some suggested revisions and improvements to it before we vote to transfer the property back to the association. And also, Mark, you mentioned the board members, and I do know, my understanding is with Jen Sala has done a lot of work on this, and it was the understanding that she would be, join the board, and you didn't mention her name, so is there, can you speak to that?
I put together a board, a temporary board, if you want to call it that, of people that I knew, people that I trusted, people that I could depend on. I do not know Ms. Sala whatsoever.
Have you tried to get to know her?
No, I'm very busy. I went with people that I didn't have to become comfortable with, so to speak.
Okay, well, so basically, you're not letting anyone in other than who you know?
I'm sorry?
So you were just excluding people you didn't know from this process?
The council asked me to put together an assembly so that the cemetery could go back to private ownership. This was not going to be a long, drawn-out committee. So, yes, I went with people that I know, people that I can trust.
Okay, well, I know Jen, and I think she's great, and she's head of the Historical Society in Ellsworth, and I think it would have served this process better had you engaged with more folks.
I'm sure you can say that with about 1,000 other people in Ellsworth, too. But I didn't ask any of them.
She was volunteering to do it, Mark.
Yeah?
So, that's, I'm not going to vote for this until the city council, until, I would like to, I'll vote no until the city attorney reviews this, and we make sure that these bylaws are up to snuff, and I would like to encourage you to get to know Ms. Sala, and see if she, there's a way for her to serve on this board.
Patrick, I'm only the sexton now. I have, I no longer have anything to do with the committee, I'm not on the committee. The sexton, what I'm going to do is, the board will tell me essentially what I can do, what I can't do. The role of the sexton is to answer questions, you know, from the public, take the phone calls, point out to people, you know, the four corners of their lot, and to answer their burial questions if they have any. So...
Well, you just said you made the committee, but now you're saying you have, you can't have any influence on who's on it?
So, I...
I'm the president of Woodbine Cemetery. That keeps me very busy. I do not want to be on the committee of two different cemeteries.
Okay.
I think that, so, is there going to be a chair of that board? Or are they all...
I would say yes, but you would have to ask them.
Okay. I think there's another, a way, if we have a very interested volunteer for that board, I think that we need to encourage her admission to that board before turning it over, and then having her get to know them, absolutely. It's really, really difficult, it can be very difficult to, sorry, it can be very difficult to find people that are interested in doing these types of things, and it provides longevity, and I think it would be a great idea. But, what is the, Councilor Helen?
You mentioned, I don't know your exact words, about turning it over to the association, and then the council would have nothing to do with it.
Correct. As it was before.
I apologize?
Just like it was before.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify your comments.
What is the will of the council?
Is there, is there any harm in waiting the couple of weeks, or however long it takes for our city's council to look this over? Is it just pushing it down the road to the next meeting, or maybe an item on one of the special meetings coming up, something like that? Is there, is there any harm, is, are there a lot of calls coming in that we can't respond to at the cemetery?
I've taken several calls now, it's that time of year.
Well, and to that point, Mark is empowered to be the sexton, and that continues. It's the authority of the association, and, you know, there are pieces of the bylaws that are incomplete. There's no, nothing about financial decision-making, there's no, there's reference to an executive committee, but no description or definition of the executive committee, so I think Patrick's idea, after he looked at the bylaws, of having an attorney look at them and make sure, I want to make sure for the city council to have been trusted with passing this on to a new association, that we make sure that we set them up for success, and that means really thorough bylaws. I don't know what kind of nonprofit designation is needed, there is one in the bylaws where it was registered with the state, so I think, again, if we could get a checklist from an attorney about here, the things that need to happen, and provide that to a new association that really does reflect all of the interests in the, in the city and in the families that are buried there. One of the things Jen noted in her review is the man for whom the city of Otis Field, I know there's an Otis and an Otis Field, the man that that city, that town was named for is buried in this cemetery, so there's a lot here that we want to honor and get right while we have it, before we pass it on to a new group.
So do we, it looks like it, we need a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To table.
To table. So Charlie, if you could work with our attorneys and bring it back when it's ready?
Yep.
Thank you. Item number 12, council order number 042400, requested to the request of the highway superintendent to approve an e-waste application to start a new program and to approve the purchase or lease of a container to store e-waste materials.
Good evening, council, Adam Wilson, highway superintendent. On February 29th, the solid waste committee met, and we chose to move forward with planning for a new e-waste recycling program. Before you win your packets is this proposed structure and the fee schedule. Also, I spoke with Dinah Day, Dinah, and she would have been here tonight, but she is having a medical thing done, so, and she's excited about serving and going forward.
So just for the public to understand, we're looking at, for this e-waste program, some of the fees associated with it is TV, computer monitors between 15 to 34 inches, flat fee of $5 per item, TVs 35 to 100 inches, a flat fee of $10 per item, and any other e-waste, such as laptops, motherboard, desktop printers, fax machines, cell phones are all free. So, and just so the public understands us well, that there's not, we're just basically paying for our container, it, this is, we don't have to pay for them, it's $100 to pick up?
Right, so it's, yeah, sorry. So, the pickup is up to 12 pallets per time, and it's a $100 fee to pick it up and dispose of it, and we're really basically looking to cover all of our costs, so that it's not an additional cost to the taxpayer. That being said, you know, this is just the beginning of everything that could be recycled, but we want to start small to make sure we get it right, and then we can add on as we go.
I think this is going to be huge for the community, because we've been looking for some e-waste disposal.
Yes, people ask for that, yeah.
Everett will be your first customer.
I have had a, can I speak? Okay, I've had a conversation with one of the council members who actually owns storage containers, and he has graciously said that he would rent us a storage container for a dollar a month.
Dollar a year.
Oh, dollar a year, oh. It went down.
It's getting better.
It's getting better.
Can I get that deal?
Just to kick the, don't go out and spend money on something just to kick it off, you know, we can...
You know, and that was a five-year lease, he was very gracious about the hope.
Thank you.
Whatever, whatever.
Yes, that's, that's everything.
Thank you.
You just, I don't want to be the one that sells something to the city, I don't want to go there, so, so I think, I think in, I think the smartest thing for both sides would be to simply let us bring your container and see how it goes for the city.
It's very generous of you, thank you.
It's a way to start.
So the motion then will be to approve the request, but not the container, because now the container's just basically gotten donated.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, move to approve the request to implement a new e-waste program with a suggested fee structure as written.
So...
Are we doing separate motions, or?
Well, we already did that.
We did do that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yes.
What's that? That's the second one.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Oh.
We have some public comment.
Wait a second.
Sure, come up to the podium, please.
My name is Judy Blod, I live in Ellsworth.
Come up, can you come up to the podium? Thank you.
I have a teacher voice, but it's for the, it's for the YouTubers.
Yeah, it's for the people that are watching us.
So my name is Judy Blod, I live in Ellsworth, and I was just wondering if the e-waste would be open during the same hours as the recycling and transfer station?
Yes.
Excellent question, thank you. Did someone else have a question? I thought I saw two.
Well, let me look at the, what's the agenda?
Okay, did, we have a discussion?
Could I just ask, I'm making assumptions that nobody would consider this a conflict of interest if I vote...
It's not.
Not at all.
Okay.
Financial gain.
You're actually voting to lose one.
Yeah, right, okay.
You'll have to declare that dollar at the end.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't, as I understand it, we can't add the fee structure into this, can't vote on that.
Why's that?
Because it's on number 13.
The next item is about the total solid waste fee schedule, so, I mean, I guess you could just approve the e-waste portion of it, but you might as well just wait till the discussion on the whole, solid waste fee schedule at the next agenda item.
So do we need to move to approve the program?
Just the program, not the schedule.
Okay, I will friendly amend myself to move to approve the request to implement a new e-waste program. Stop.
Who seconded?
I think it was me.
Did you?
Oh, I thought so. Oh, maybe it's me.
Okay.
I would approve the friendly amendment.
Oh, my gosh, we're losing control here. Do you, do you approve that amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Seconded, all right, further discussion?
Can I just say thank you to Adam? I don't know where the idea came from, but this is a tremendous service.
Well, we, actually, we're quite lucky, the North Coast Services had approached us a few years ago, and they circled back around and said, hey, where are you?
Well, you know, I've had a couple of conversations recently, some people start with no, some people start with yes, and clearly you started with yes, that they came to you, and instead of finding the reasons not to, you played with it to see if we'd make it work, and I want to thank you for that. I know it adds extra work with everything you say yes to, but I appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Okay.
I'd like to get it out there on the website and communications, and get an hour to let everybody know, because it's exciting.
Yep.
And maybe a date that it's going to be in service, like the residents do.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Yee-haw.
There we go. I don't have, did you get the e-waste schedule, too?
Could I request that you don't grow it too fast, because I don't want to give you two?
There's a backlog, there's old TVs in people's basements.
All right, item number 13, discussion with the highway superintendent regarding solid waste fee schedule.
So...
I don't have a copy.
There, after much searching, we have not been able to locate a fee schedule.
Okay.
So we would like to have permission to call another solid waste committee and come up with, it gives us a chance to look at all of our fees, you know, the residential and the commercial, as well as the e-waste.
There's no action on here, so I'm just assuming that you just wanted to tell us that.
Just the permission, I guess, yep.
So, we should have voted on that.
Do you have to vote to call solid waste?
No, we should, on the fee schedule, because we don't have a fee schedule.
Can we meet before, what's the timeline on the e-waste, starting, can we meet before it starts, or would that delay things too long?
Sure.
Can we just reopen really quickly? Can we please just reopen?
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, let's reopen 12, and then the council order 042400, and let's do the fee schedule so that we can get that program moving and not have to do anything else. Yes, I am, yep, you do.
Move to reopen.
Second.
All in favor? I don't think I have to have discussion for that, thank you. Okay, so that's reordered, can we redo that?
I would like to make a new motion to supersede the previous motion, move to approve the request to implement a new e-waste program with the listed suggested fee structure.
Second. Discussion? All in, all in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 14, council order number 042401, request of the finance director to authorize loans of up to $1,844,341 through the state school revolving renovation fund, and to amend order number 101908 to reallocate bond proceeds to additional projects.
So we've talked about this a pretty good amount, is...
Can you state your name and position?
I'm Ann Lane, finance director, City of Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Does any, the first loan is for the state school revolving renovation fund, which is the money that was awarded to the school for the renovation of HCTC, and the second part is to reallocate the bond proceeds from the 2023 general obligation bond, so that we can cover the expenses that DOT is asking us to cover when they come to do the overhaul of High Street. So we were concerned that we would have to borrow that money, because the DEP funds were already allocated, but they're allowing us to use some of that money for Water Street, so the money that we used from the general obligation bond for Water Street can now be used to cover those expenses for the High Street project.
Am I remembering correctly, those would also act as matching funds for some additional grant money coming in for this project?
Yes, because we can use city money for that.
Okay.
It's my understanding that this was not advertised as a public hearing, and so I think that we need to table this item for another meeting.
I thought we had already voted on the first one.
I think it was the grant piece.
Oh.
According to, right, Tony, it was the grant piece that we, and we didn't have a public hearing, and by charter, we have to have a public hearing for borrowings.
Is there a timeline? I know we talked about some other items that had to be done by a certain date, or just as soon as possible?
So, you have a special meeting on the 24th, that agenda's been published already, but I could create a second special meeting agenda, I would say 13, that might also include this, and some potential other items.
Okay, thank you.
What would you like?
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor? So that will be tabled until next Monday.
Do we have to table the reallocation of the bond funds, because that was advertised and discussed?
Those, that's not a new borrowing, so, do we, Tammy? It's all one agenda item, so you really can't break it out, though.
Should we go to add it as a separate item?
Ken, if you'd like, that's up to the council, it has to be unanimous.
That issue was advertised, or it was in the agenda, but it wasn't advertised, is in the agenda packet, but it, what's the language in the agenda?
Um...
Yeah, it says to reallocate the bonds, so I think I'm comfortable splitting it out and getting that done tonight. I don't see any procedural issues.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's reallocating funds, it's not new borrowing, so it doesn't necessarily need a public hearing, it's the comfort of the council.
Patrick's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
I'd move to, move to add order amending, move to add item, amending order 101908 is previously amended by order 102104 to reallocate bond proceeds to additional projects as an agenda item. Next.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so we're going to do that as kind of, 14B.
Robert, the rules.
I know, I don't have my book in front of me, so...
It's right there.
You do have your book in front of you.
Huh?
You do have your book in front of you.
Oh, I do have a, how's that?
And a pamphlet.
I'm sure we're fine.
I think we're close enough.
Yeah. Is our council sitting here?
How many lawyers are in this room?
We're doing anything we'll... No, he says we're fine.
Close enough.
Okay.
Okay, so, item 14B, amendment order number 101908 to reallocate these bond proceeds to additional projects.
Yes.
I don't know how to make this a motion, but move to...
Before you make a motion, I'm sorry, don't, I think we ought to tell the public what we're doing, I think it would, you know, make sense.
That's a great plan.
If the finance director could tell us what we're doing and why, for the reallocation of the bond funds.
Please.
Okay, so, as you know, the DOT project that's going to start on High Street, they added some work that they expect the city to do, it was not in our original budget allocations for public works or roads. So initially, we thought we would have to borrow the money, but we put it back to our engineers and DEP to see if there was a way that we could not do that, and so we're being allowed to use, the DEP is allowing us to pay for part of Water Street Pump Station with our grant, so we could move some of the funds from the general obligation bond to cover the work for DOT, because DOT, the DEP will not allow us to apply any of their funds to the DOT project, so they, instead, they allowed us to use it for the Water Street Pump Station. So now the money's available for what we need to have for the DOT project, and we don't have to borrow any more money. Thank you.
Now, Mike, if, do you have anything you need to add, or is that about?
Is this, this reallocation is what we talked about before. So, Wastewater has some extra money we're working with from the grants and the congressionally-directed funding. So, the DOT project came along, in order to fund that without having to borrow additional funds, we're using more of the DEP grant money for Water Street than we were originally intending to, because we got the congressionally-directed spending for High Street, which left more money in the grant for us to utilize, so we're putting that towards the, paying the rest of the Water Street Pump Station project off, because it's done, and then we're taking the bond money that was allocated for Water Street Pump Station, and we're moving that over and reallocating it to the High Street DOT project to pay for the sewer work, to raise and lower the manhole rims and covers, water shutouts for the water department, and rim, new rims and covers that we're going to need to order for the project, and insertion valves that the water department's going to need for their part of the project, and so that total is around $340,000, and that's the money that's being moved from the Water Street, general obligation money that was dedicated to Water Street, over to the DOT project, so we don't have to borrow those funds.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Now you can take your motion, thank you.
Move to reallocate funds from the Water Street Pump Station to the High Street project, as discussed here tonight.
And the amount, is there a dollar amount in there?
Is there? Is there a dollar amount?
There's an estimated dollar amount of $340,000.
Should I say that?
Yep.
For the amount of $340,000?
Yes.
Yeah?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have one question.
Yep, go ahead, you started.
At the finance committee, it was talked originally that this was going to be around $276, $278, $279,000. Where did we go from $279 to $340?
Got it. Mike Harris, Wastewater Superintendent, so that original number came from their first estimate that the DOT gave to us, that we met with the DOT, and in that projected number, they, he estimated $2,500 per, for the raising of the frames and covers, but he could not guarantee that number, and he said he'd seen it as high as $3,500. So instead of not having enough money and not allocating enough money, we said, okay, if it, let's just say worst-case scenario comes in at $4,000 for, for the rims and covers, and let's just say, instead of $700, it comes in at $1,000 for the water shutouts, and then when you add the cost of the manhole rims and covers we need, and the insertion valves, that's how we ended up at the $340,000.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
If that, if that budget then comes in under that highest estimate?
Yes.
Does that money return to the general funds? Or is it...
Um, no. No, in fact, in the bond order from bond counsel, there isn't a specific amount, it's just earmarked for that particular project, so I'm sure it would be subject to the, any audit of that project.
Come on, you know.
Counselor?
Never mind, we've already removed that, we tabled that other item, I guess we're done, sorry.
Gangly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 15, council order number 042402, request of the code enforcement officer to deem Seven Fairground Road as a dangerous building and to begin the process to mitigate such danger.
Lori Roberts and Robert Grant, he's taking over for me next month, and just wanted to go over with you, you got the pictures in your packets of the burned-out home. The unfortunate thing was that the family is, the parents are disabled now, and the son is in his 40s, but they received monies from their insurance policy for personal property, and that money, when it was granted to them, was taken from them by their bank for the loan on the home. And so now they can't get rid of the personal property that is within the home, because they're, they gathered a lot of items, shall we say, within the home and outside the home. But no one would come and give bids to fix the upstairs until the entire home was cleaned out of that personal property. There's just small aisleways in the hallways to get down, and they, the contractors weren't going to come in and do it. So now that all of that money is gone to the banks, our only other way of having anything done with this property is to deem it dangerous, and the attorney is here to describe the process, but I was going to give you the reasons I'm determining, how I determined it was dangerous, was through our property main... was through our property maintenance ordinance, and it's... Those are the items there that I'm referring to. There's some letters that I received recently, and I emailed you this morning, of people in the neighborhood complaining, and also what they owe in their sewer and water bills. The taxes are current, but the sewer bill is behind. And Tammy knows that process well enough to know that it's going into foreclosure and lien, and I don't know that process as well, because it's not my department. But they have, October 2023, they had a lien foreclosing in April of 2025 for their sewer in the amount of $230.70. Now, I don't know if that's paid at the last moment, then that stops this whole process. But just to let you know what's out there and available for the liens and foreclosures through the sewer process. And this is Ryan.
Hi, Ryan Lozana, I'm an attorney with Rudman-Winchell in Bangor. I can give you a rundown of the dangerous buildings' process, if you want me to, just really briefly. There's a notice and a hearing requirement in state statute. Essentially, at the hearing, you would make a factual determination that the building is indeed dangerous, that it meets the definition of the statute of what a dangerous building is, which is pretty broad, so you have pretty broad determination. There'll be testimony from the Code Enforcement Office and Code folks, as well as it gives the opportunity for the property owner to come forward and give their perspective as well, if they want to. If they decide to show up or not is all up to them. And then you'll issue an order, and when you issue that order, it gives the property owner 30 days to decide if they want to either demolish the structure, if they want to repair the structure. And if they don't do anything at that point, you can move forward and demolish the structure at the city's expense and clean it up. At that point, you can put a special tax on the property, and that allows you to eventually potentially recover some of your costs. So Lori can give, you know, she did, you know, she gives a good background on the condition of the property and all that stuff, and whether or not it is dangerous will be ultimately up to you. But if you want to move forward, drop the notices and move forward on the hearing. And it's your decision to make, so any questions you have are free. For me, or...
Any questions?
Go ahead.
The owners of the property, were they aware of this agenda item tonight?
It was public notice, yeah, and I don't know if the attorney was contacted.
I spoke with their attorney briefly, I was informed that she no longer represents them, so, at this time. So I haven't spoken to the property owners directly.
No one has reached out to the property owner to tell them about this tonight, other than public notification?
Correct.
That's correct.
Can you talk maybe a little bit about the previous conversations you may have had with them, where...
I was speaking more with their attorney over time after the home was burned, and the insurance company. And that's where I learned that those funds were recouped from the bank. And when someone has an attorney, we go directly to the attorney. I didn't know she was not working for them anymore, so... And their mail goes, still goes to that home and that address. And it's just that their plans are none to do anything. They would leave it like this and let it just completely fall. And that's what I'm worried about, is that it's so dangerous that now that water is penetrating it, it's just breaking down the members of the structure. And if they can't themselves take care of it, then we've gotta do something to help the citizens around that neighborhood that have put up with this since the last, it's almost been a year since, or over a year since the fire, so...
So when this happens, are we foreclosing on this property? Are we doing something that we will... Ryan had said about the extra tax.
Yes, it would need like a special tax assessment that I believe would self-foreclose, at a certain point would foreclose, but...
So we're depending on the sewer foreclosure to...
No, we're not. I just wanted to let you know that that was out there as a process. Right now, if we, if we were to go in and take that home down, we would then assign a special tax assessment to it, and they would have to pay that as if they were paying their taxes to take the home down. And then if they don't pay that, then it goes through the lien process and foreclosure process for taxes.
And if we vote to do this, do they get a notice before we actually...
Yes, yes, there's a whole process for that, they'll get notice there. The person who holds the mortgage for the property will get notice, and it's all formal and all that, so, yep, if you decide to move forward.
Just to confirm, what I'm hearing is this would put a process in motion. I would urge you to make sure they actually get the notice where they don't have the attorney. One other question, when you're looking at the debris, having seen the photographs, is there any what I would call brownfield issues? Are there petroleum, was there an oil tank that burst, or anything that's looking at deeper issues of...
Nothing I'm aware of.
...fraying of the soil?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Do we know if there is a mortgage holder?
There is, yes, yep. They would be notified, like I said, too.
So the insurance money didn't pay off the mortgage?
No. Obviously, no. They started with the personal property, and then had they moved forward with, you know, making the repairs, they would have given them the money for that, but it stopped with the personal property.
Because this, or because it's looking like this falls under that very broad definition of dangerous building, does that automatically put this building in the court of the city in terms of liability? Since we're looking at it, we know it's dangerous, if something happens, the city is then liable? Or the mortgage holder is still liable, or somewhere in between?
I believe the property owner would still be liable if he got hurt on their property.
The property remains the property owner's property, so there's no assumption of, by the city of taking possession.
Like a motion? No questions?
Move to approve the request of the Code Enforcement Officer to deem Seven Fairground Road as a dangerous building and begin the process to mitigate the danger.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, God, I thought I saw your hand go up, I'm sorry. Okay, item 16, Council Order 042403, Request of the City Manager to accept annual reports for housing TIF districts.
Yep, I think this one probably would've been on the consensus agenda if we had one tonight, but pretty straightforward. It's, these are longstanding TIFs, every year we file a report. The number of affordable housing units in there, that's pretty much what it is, is a different number on each one. So getting approval to submit these reports, as is. And then I know we're doing capital budgets this week on Wednesday to start talking about TIFs, and hoping after this meeting to switch my brain into TIF mode, and we'll talk more on Wednesday.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Move to approve the annual reports for tax share April 1, 2003 through March 31, 2024 for affordable housing tax increment funding districts Leonard Lake, Oriway, and Oriway Senior in the city of Ellsworth.
Second.
Discussion?
One point of discussion. I found the form incredibly hard to read, at least looking at it on the computer. The entries didn't line up with the lines, I had to look at it two or three times to find. The number of units was actually up in the title, not in the squares, so I wasn't able to really understand what this was. So I'm comfortable, like, this is a report that's always happened, but I'm eager for us to begin to really dive deep into housing. We have the workshop on homelessness crisis, but a key part is gonna be an opportunity to better understand these properties, these TIFs, and the report wasn't helpful to me in that way. So I'm fine with approving them, but we can do better with the layout of the form, for whatever reason, it just was odd. And again, I think a little bit of context when we're asked to approve something would be incredibly helpful as we move forward.
All those in favor? I need to make sure I get everybody's hands up. Item 17, Council Order 042404, Request of the City Manager and Superintendent to accept the school budget for referendum.
Good evening. First, I want to acknowledge School Board Chair, oh, Amy Bill, Superintendent of Schools, sorry. I want to acknowledge first that we do have three school board members here. Our School Board Chair Kelly McKenny, and then our Finance Committee, Paul Marcosian and Bev Sargent are here. And I also have to acknowledge that seven leadership team members are here, even though it's school vacation. So I appreciate their stamina, being here this evening. I think it's important to note that the budget that I presented at the last school workshop did stay the same. And on April 11th, the school board did unanimously vote to approve the budget as it was presented to you. So looking tonight, so that we can stay on track to have our budget approved at the June referendum, so that our budget's in place for July 1 changeover, looking for council's approval tonight for the budget. So, without resolution orders, just like with school revolving renovation funds. So, to backtrack, I'm a little nervous about the revolving renovation fund timeline. Not knowing that some of those things were not in place, I am a little nervous about that, because in meeting with the architects, we have a pretty tight timeline with the scope of projects that are involved in this. So I am a little concerned that if we have to wait until your regular meeting in May, that that's gonna be an issue.
No, that was, that was tabled till Monday.
Till Monday? So we're coming back Monday to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need to bring everybody, though.
Okay, no, the rest of you are, no, they're not coming here. So my question becomes, is it possible to approve the total budget tonight? Like, the, would that give us the time that we need to put in place? Because we were told from the beginning, this was the drop-dead date to get the referendum on time. If, I was told possibly before, that if we vote on the total of the budget, that that would be able to put us in place to have the election on time. If we don't do it tonight, my understanding is we cannot have the election as scheduled, and we'd have to have a special election for the school budget. So I'm looking for your guidance, I don't know, I don't know the rules of all that.
I just need to look at the, do you look at the charter to see if this has to be a public hearing? Because it's going out to vote for a referendum, so I'm not sure why we would have to have a public hearing for this.
So just on the election timeline, whether I order ballots tomorrow or next Tuesday, I have to pay extra to rush them. I had given today as Amy's deadline, and she worked really hard with her team to make today happen for their budget, so I do appreciate their efforts there. But if we do have to wait a week, it's still a rush fee. But in speaking with Charlie over the last week or so, we're still confident, if you approve it next Monday during a special meeting, that we can move forward with June 11th election. And I don't refuse anymore to add to that.
Nope.
I'm just wondering, I'm sorry, my thought process is that we could vote tonight on the total budget, and then next Monday, we could do the resolutions.
Point of clarification.
Sure.
I tried again to reconcile my calendar with city council. I have our next meeting on the 24th, which is Wednesday, not the 22nd, which is Monday.
It's the 24th?
So we're talking Wednesday, the 24th, unless we do another meeting, which I don't endorse.
No, the 24th is the next.
That's a, that's a workshop, that's a budget workshop, that's not the, don't we have a special meeting?
Budget workshop and special meeting, and I can link to the council orders.
No, no, that's fine.
Because I got it wrong before.
So it's Wednesday, not Monday?
Yep, Wednesday, and then, this Wednesday is, yeah, there is the TIF capital, but we'd have to call it for that next one.
I'm just waiting for Tammy to look at the find, the school budget under the school department.
So the 24th is still...
There is something, because it tells, it states that we can't, we don't have light item veto. It's under the school.
Under school board.
It's the very, like, last three or four pages.
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
Of the charter?
Of the charter.
Okay.
Of the, of what section?
It's part of the line on page 30.
Almost there.
The board will have all the powers and duties prescribed for school board by general laws of state and name, including the authority for and on behalf of the city of Ellsworth to sell and lease personal prosperity.
Next one.
The board will be the head of the city, education department will annually furnish the city council summary of the budget required during the ensuing municipal year for the support of public education. On the basis of this budget summary, the council will adopt a gross appropriation for the operation of the city schools to be under direction and control of the board.
They have a gross summary?
My concern is, is that every budget that we've ever approved always goes before, as a public hearing. So even though this is the school department's budget, I think that's why we qualify it for a public hearing.
To my point is, this is going to referendum, so people don't get to vote on our budget, but they do get to vote on the school budget.
The public hearing requirement is in Title 30A, which is the state law for schools. And I don't know how far back some of you can remember, but back beyond 2014, when you were part of the school district, the RSU, this is a requirement only on an RSU. We actually have no legal requirement to continue the validation, except that we had been doing it since 2014, even so. And so last year, as part of that Title 30A rule, every third year, you have to ask your voters, do you wish to continue this, which we did last year, as we've been doing. And they did vote by a very small margin to continue this for three years. So it's not in the charter, because it is in Title 30A, but it is only applicable to an RSU, which we are no longer a part of. So you could choose to follow your charter as a local school district and disregard this section of Title 30A, should you choose, and that's where I'll allow the manager to step in with some other conversations if he chooses.
Well, that's a whole different thing. The validation's a validation, and this year it's going in there, so I don't really wanna muddy the waters. But thank you, I appreciate the information. But I don't wanna, I don't think we need to muddy the waters on whether or not we do a validation, because...
People already voted.
People have already voted to do that, and I, I'm not one...
That would be disingenuous.
Yeah, that's another whole subject. But as far as whether or not we need a public hearing, I'm looking at John and putting him on the spot. The charter doesn't require it. I know we normally do it as, it used to be, we did it as part of our budget, it was all one thing. And then with the resolutions and everything for the, and we had a public hearing for it. But because we now have to do a school department budget months before we do our budget, I just don't know... I don't, I don't know if we need a public hearing, because the public gets to vote on this anyway, so it might be redundant.
You wouldn't have time to schedule a public hearing before Wednesday, and sort of...
Not till, it'd be a week from Wednesday, because we have to get it into the papers. We're on the side of caution?
So just to clarify, we, our interpretation of our charters, we don't need a public hearing?
No. Separate, because normally, if we didn't have this election, it would be part of our budget, and then there would be a public hearing.
So I don't think, if it's not required, I mean, I would, I understand folks not wanting to change up at this point, but I, it's not legally required. I think my two cents is we would just incorporate this with our normal budget process this year to avoid all these issues. But I think if that's not where the council's at, then I think we want to vote now. But I think if that's not where the council's at, then I think we want to vote now, whether to proceed, so we can stay on the timeline that we've been working towards. And if we don't need a public hearing, then we shouldn't, we don't need a public hearing, and I think we should act tonight.
I agree. Also, I think this year especially, the school board has been coming to finance committee meetings, we've had two budget meetings, we've been pretty public about it. So I really think, just from a standpoint of good faith, there has been plenty of opportunity for public input. I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable, and frankly, I would really like us to vote on it tonight.
Councilor Smith.
I'm persuaded by Councilor Hanson, and I think the vote itself will be the public weighing in on it. And if the city department is concerned about how that will go, they are certainly free to hold additional meetings. But if there's, like, as you said, there've been workshops, not only can you show up on them, but they're also recorded and available, so people can learn in those steps. So if a public hearing isn't required, the public still has an opportunity to weigh in with voting, and then the school department has the opportunity to get additional information out prior to then. That seems to be achieving the goal of making sure that people are informed and have the opportunity to weigh in. So I would support moving forward tonight.
Not to mention the school board meetings, which are also public.
Oh, true.
Additional information.
Yeah.
So. I don't like to make motions, but, so I'm not going to, but I'm going to ask you guys to, but my, so.
To dictate motion.
To dictate motions. So if we approve or whatever to the budget tonight, we will have until next Wednesday to be able to, if we need to do a public hearing, if we go, I'm going to ask our attorney to look at MRSA with the school department, to make sure that there aren't any separate requirements for public hearings. And if we do have to have the resolutions in our motion, we can at least approve it tonight, or whatever, and then be open to next Wednesday, completing the process if we need to.
And you're requesting a motion that says that?
If that's what you got, if you, you guys, if you all feel that that's appropriate.
Asking the clerk to wait until that next Wednesday is the final.
Yeah, she's got to put a rush on it anyway, so now we have to pay for the rush, and might as well make sure that we have everything exactly right.
So we'll wait to get counselors, or council's approval of this process, and we'll try and hold it to the last second as a staff until we're there. You know, if, as a backup to that backup, you know, we do have about, we analyze the dates here, we have about, could go another two weeks with the kind of forty-five day backtrack that are required to kind of get these ballots for absentees. So I'd rather not go that route, because it's another special election on top of things. And, you know, we're already doing, I think, four elections, or three elections this year? Three, so adding a fourth would be great. So ideally, we'll get it before the rush, but we'll make sure it's legal either way.
Well, and it sounds like if we vote on something today, and we say we're not going to move forward with that vote until we get legal input, and the legal input comes tomorrow, then you could move forward tomorrow. Do you think I'm making two motions, or one single giant motion? All right, I'm going to make a single giant motion to accept the school budget for referendum as it has been presented to us. With the caveat that if our lawyer thinks it is necessary, we will add in a public hearing within the next week and a half.
With resolutions.
With resolutions. Yeah? Anybody want to second that?
I'll second that one.
Do we have discussion? Councilor Heller?
I choose to abstain from this because my wife works for the school department, but it would, so I'm sitting on the sidelines here, but could we get a feel from our city attorney that's sitting right here?
I can tell you that I haven't researched this, so hesitant to give you any advice at this point. The concept seems reasonable, that if you're sending something out to a referendum, it would be redundant to have a public hearing first. But I would like to stop and check.
Secondly, we've pushed the school, the schools met the deadline. And just because we don't have our act together on the other side, it's, I would think that tonight's the night. But, and it sounds like we have a way to add this process if we're wrong, correct? Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the work.
Yeah, thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Oh, no, we got a few more.
That's funny.
That's a riot. We're only on eighteen.
Yes.
Seven to go.
I walk the dog at eight-thirty, and they're reading at this point.
Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Item number eighteen, council order number zero four two four oh five, request the facilities manager to award the bid to sell the city van and to authorize the city manager to sign necessary documents.
I'm taking over for Jim on this one.
Oh.
Pretty straightforward, it's in your packet. We were curious when we got these bids, what would come in, and it's four thousand one was the minimum bid. I think that's acceptable to clear this from our inventory. It's pretty close to what the Kelly Blue Book and other things we looked at are in there for, so we'd like to move forward.
But you don't use the minimum bid?
No, I'm sorry, the highest bid.
That's the highest bid, that's different.
The minimum was fifteen hundred, the highest of the nine bids was four thousand and one dollars, so recommending to move forward with it.
And if we move forward with the sale of the van at the price quoted of four thousand and one dollars? To Mark Martin for the sum of four thousand and one dollars?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Item number nineteen, discussion and potential action to consider the scheduling of an election education workshops sponsored by Councilor Heller.
Thank you. Some time ago, Mr. Linehan came forward wanting to discuss, and asked the whole council to discuss election integrity. I went to the city planner, who was the interim city manager and the clerk, and said, I'm not on this election integrity train. However, when someone in the community wants to discuss it, you know, what do you think? What are our options? And the idea was floated during that meeting that perhaps an election workshop would be in order to broaden the discussion. Tony brought up the election machines, the manual count, the integrity or voter list, and perhaps it could maybe stretch into people getting interested in voting, not just about the fraud piece, the entire piece. We thought that might be a compromise, we thought it would be lengthy to bring that in on a council meeting, much like tonight, there's been many lengthy topics. So we thought that might be a compromise to discuss potentially setting up an election workshop for those people interested. When Mr. Linehan brought that forward, none of us signed up for that plan. I don't think any of us wanted to go there. And I thought a compromise was to put it before the council, if there's support to establish a workshop, and if there's not. If there is support, I would want it to be a broad subject, not just a fraud subject. I would want to get more out of it than just the fraud. Perhaps some history, perhaps how people could register to vote, become more interested in voting. I'm not one that makes motions, so I thought this was a, perhaps a compromise that fit with the clerk and fit with Matt's idea, and we even brought Charlie in on it when he became city manager. That's where we're at. I don't know if this council has any interest in that, but I think a workshop idea is probably the best spot for that, if at all.
I wonder if there is already an opportunity for people to learn about how elections work, how our voting works. I know we all got invitations from the League of Women Voters for an informational session. I'm wondering about the cost of setting up something special that is a city council meeting. So I'm wondering, what information is already available? Does the secretaries of states, excuse me, the secretary of state's office already put out the kind of information on, this is how elections work, this is who's allowed to register, all of that stuff? It may not be necessary for us to do something specifically. And again, I'm concerned about what the added costs would be for something like that.
Yeah, let me give this to Tony, I believe they have a new election audit division as well, and Tony's been in touch with the secretary of state's office, there might be something that we can point people towards.
Yes, Councilor Smith, there are some opportunities on their website to learn how to absentee vote, how to register, how to find, you know, where to register to vote, districting, all those types of things on their website. I think there's also worthy of note, we have organizations that are vetted, such as League of Women Voters, that are doing local work. We also have party affiliated organizations here in Ellsworth, for, you know, different party associations can, those are great places and resources for voters. But also, people can come in here to city hall forty hours a week and inquire of my staff how it works, and we are here forty hours a week for those inquiries. Learning elections is a great opportunity to work in election, and that is a wealth of information, and I'm always looking for workers. So, like, there's a sign up online, everybody.
That was a good slide.
There are plenty of opportunities. While I did propose that this would be an idea with Councilor O'Halloran, I personally think that there are many other opportunities that are more appropriate. However, should the council wish to have a workshop, my staff and I will put together some sort of, you know, training environment. But I do feel that there are plenty of opportunities to get this information through other sources.
I guess as a follow up, when we get, sorry, when we get to the point where we have the machines, is there maybe a time, I don't know how soon before an election they come in, but show people how they work. It was a very interesting memo that you prepared on the fact that they're not connected to the internet at all, that they're optical scanners. I think that people would find it of interest.
Yeah, so I have a letter that's in your packet from Shanabella, Secretary of State. Happy to have more, put that on the website, it is a public document, she's authorized us to use that at our discretion. I do have some fact sheets on our machines, our machines are here twelve months a year, locked away. They're not operational outside of an election cycle. There are many, many authentications and pass codes in order to even turn these machines on. So I want to make that very clear to the public. These machines, without multiple authentications, are absolutely useless to the general public. They are not connected to the internet, they do not contain a modem, there's no memory storage, there is nothing to be stolen. They also have built-in data encryption, so if you put an incorrect memory device or an unauthorized device in it, it will shut itself down. It will not allow that fraud to occur. Before each cycle, we are required, under state law, to test the machines with sample ballots, to make sure they're going to read and calibrate based on, you know, if you fill this bubble in, is it reading that bubble? The testing is done during office hours. This year, we can, with Maura here on staff now, we haven't had a lot of, as you know, like, communication, marketing abilities, but with Maura here, I could have her work on designing something so that when we do test those, we can put a notice out the day that we plan on testing. It is open to the public. I've, in twelve years of elections, I've never had a voter come watch how they work. They, they have faith in the staff and the election process, so we do appreciate those voters that understand the hard work that goes into these elections, but it is a public process for testing those ballots, and I will put a notice out in case people are wanting to observe.
That's terrific, thank you. In my mind, that fits the need that Steve brought forward, there are opportunities. And again, with communications, we can market that to the public rather than wait for them to inquire.
There's also poll watching is a legal right in the state of Maine, so you can come on election day and actually watch the machines in action on the day of. There are machines, they jam, we open them, we fix them. That's bound to happen, it happens all across the state. But yes, I think the staff that are here for questions on a regular basis and other means, there's a plethora of information out there at the fingertips of the voter.
Also, Tony, I appreciated the information you shared at the administrative budget hearing, just here's how much an election generally costs, and a recount costs, and here's the differences in the recounts versus the election, and they're very, very slight, and it's a great test of the system as well. It was nice to learn about that.
It is, and so far, I mean, Ellsworth is kind of known for having recounts, and every recount that, that we've had has been truly upheld within two or three votes, if it hasn't changed at all. So I mean, I think that just kind of shows the consistency of the integrity here in Ellsworth that you're supposed to be very proud of.
Thank you for that.
Could you just speak, if there's not support for a workshop, I understand, but could you just speak about, if people wanted to see this testing process, is this something that takes an hour, does it take ten minutes? What does it take?
It truly depends. So with each election, depending on the ballot layout and how many questions and candidates are, we have to test every position on the ballot. So if there are twenty people running for city council, we have to test all twenty of those ovals to make sure that machine's going to read. So the more ovals on the ballot, the more ballots needed for testing, which could take longer. This June referendum, I suspect it'll be done in a couple of hours, it's a small ballot overall, just a few ovals to test, so the time varies. If they are looking to observe a November presidential city council race, that's going to take an all day to watch the whole process start to finish. But a smaller election like a June referendum, maybe a couple of hours.
And to be clear, if someone chose to come and watch this process, that's not the process for a contest. That's the process to learn, and the contest can come later, correct? We don't want to have this argumentative situation here. We, it's a process to learn and questions and answers, but we, we don't want.
Correct, yeah. If I were to have members of the public come, I would treat it very much like an election, I would probably rope off a section so that my staff can work without, you know, being encroached on and very uncomfortable. You'd be able to see everything if you wanted to watch, but not be in personal space, and we would not be taking questions, it would be an observation process.
It's a public comment? I'm pretty sure I see someone squirming over there. That's okay, yeah.
Hi there, I'm Alene Daly, and I, in the main leads for Cause of America, and Cause of America is looking into election integrity. I want my vote to count as one, I want all of you. I want all of your votes to count as one. And as far as the machines, the electronic connections is prohibited, okay? In the Maine state legislature, the regulations, and that's chapter 21A, says connections of any voting devices, as defined by section 808, via the internet to centralized voting collection equipment, may not be employed by election officials of the state. Networking of voting machines, internet-enabled, or otherwise is prohibited, okay? So, I know everybody says, we don't have Dominion machines, okay? We don't. We have ESNS, DS-200s in the state of Maine, and those have telemotoms in them because they have Dominion software. They are not ESNS software, that's Dominion software. They have a telemodom in them. ESNS was told not to give them out to states with that telemodom in them. Dominion went against it and gave it out with the telemodom in them. So, it isn't that we are questioning clerks, we are questioning anybody. That is not our intent. Our intent is, we want election integrity, we want everybody's vote, vote to count as one. They have had, we sent you, sent some things that, what do you call them? The, on YouTube, some of the things that have been put on YouTube about the machines, where a, a guy, he was election, was a hacker, and he went up in front of the court of the Supreme Court of, I think it was Georgia, and he took a ballpoint pen, broke into the machine with a ballpoint pen, and flipped votes and all this other stuff. Now, Ellsworth here had a machine go down at one of its precincts. Nobody showed up to fix it. All of a sudden, they get a call, and it says, your machine is fixed. You can now use it. No one came and physically did anything to that machine. And so, if they fixed the machine, how did they do that? How did they do that with it not being connected to the internet? But no one showed up to physically do anything to that machine. And there have been, a lot of people don't realize that you do not have to use machines. It is not requirement of the state. Matter of fact, it is up to the selectmen and the city council as to whether or not you use the machines. And, but, the machines that, that are being used right now do have access through the telemodom. Like, my phone is, when it's black, it's not...
So, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stop you here, because our clerk has said there is no modem in these machines. So, I'm, I'm sorry, and you passed your three minutes, but there are no modems in our machines. Our clerk has verified that.
There is telemotoms, and I can get you a picture of it, and I can send it to you. Because there is telemotons in the machines.
Okay, thank you.
John Daly, taxpayer of Ellsworth, resident of Sullivan. Cause of America is where I work out of, and I can tell you that I kind of enjoy it. By, by the way, I appreciate all you, what you people do. I feel for you. I was in education many years, you're sitting here at a board meeting, my God almighty, you people. I, you know, I, I gotta hand it to you, you're doing well. But what I was going to tell you is, Wyndham, New Hampshire, had an election, and they have eleven thousand votes. And you, this is all well documented, you can look it up. They have ESNS machines, and you know what they discovered was, they were off by a thousand votes. So, they did an audit, and what they discovered, researched it, that they called in Harry Hurstey. Hey, you don't probably make, have you ever watched HBO documentary series called Kill Jane? This is where Vice President Harris was convinced that the machines were corrupt. She still does. It's on Congress, she listed it, so did Amy Klobuchar. Both of them have stated it. I can show you the video, them telling you, they're corrupt. Now, I love the idea that the machines are being told they don't have internet connection, but I'm willing to bring a little device with me, and I will tell you that I will pick up this wireless modem device, that your machine, when it's turned on, will act just like a printer. And what will happen is it sends out a signal. Now, you're saying, well, what does that mean? Dr. Douglas Frank came in front of you and spoke to you clearly. He goes all over the country, breaking into the machines. Why is he able to do it? He knows the passcodes. He said, I'm an honest man, but corrupt people know it too. Now, you're saying to me, how come, you know, Vice President Harris doesn't? Please, we'll send you the information why she doesn't trust the machines. There's many people that don't trust them, and it comes back to their accessibility. And if you'll bring out your machine in front of us, and we're able to turn it on, and I'll show you that it sends a signal. But if it's a counting machine, it's a counting machine, Mr. Daly, then why is it sending out a signal? And you're saying, would you prove it? Yeah, I'd love to prove it to you. I don't know what you'd do with it once I show you. I'll be honest with you. We have been around to other towns when we've been requested to come and appear, and there are other towns right now that have told us they have no intention of using the machines. But what I have found was that there is this belief that they can't be touched. Well, Dr. Haldeman, recently in court, proved they could. Right in a court case in Georgia. He went up with a ballpoint pen, reset the machine, and he said, I can make that election any way you want it. Harry Hurstey, please watch the HBO documentary series. This is where Vice President Kamala Harris came up with it. She met with him. He told her, I can change the vote in that machine with my cellphone. And by the way, watch the series. That's all I'm asking you. Thank you for listening to speak tonight. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
John Minahan, 157 Shore Road in Ellsworth. Appreciate John and Malene coming in and talking about the machines. I don't think Toni is lying to anybody when she says a machine's not connected. It's not hardware connected to the internet, but it is connected by modems. And this is the problem if you go on around, that's why they can be manipulated and accessed like that. I have no, I said in my last email that I sent you guys, I sent you some documentation to look up. I hope some of you looked at the stuff. If you did, I think you'd be in favor of a workshop. But I'm just going to give you a couple other highlights that I'd like to have you think about right here. In addition to the machines being a problem, the ESNS, because it uses Dominion software, and it is connectable to the, to the internet by modems, not hardware, I want to talk to you about cleaning up the voter rolls. Let me just give you an illustration, for example. In the state of Maine, I'm going to put my glasses on, I'm only going to talk in percentages because it's a large amount of numbers, but in the census, 2020 census, there were a little over a million people in the state of Maine. The Secretary of State's office said that there was active registered voters of a million one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, twenty-five thousand more voters in the state of Maine, the Secretary of State said, than what the census said. That gave a percentage of one hundred and two point two seven percent. That's impossible. You cannot have more people registered than you have active voters by the census. I'm just going to break it down to Hancock County, just to give you an idea. Hancock County, the same way. Actually, there was a total for the county was roughly fifty-five thousand in the census. The registered voters was, if I'm reading the right total here, the registered voters was forty-nine thousand, I'm rounding this off. That gave a percentage in Hancock County of a hundred and four percent of registered voters, more than there are voters in the county. Now, you don't have to be very smart to figure out, that's impossible, that can't happen. That's what happened in Maine, that's what happened in Hancock County. Here's Ellsworth. Ellsworth, Central Hancock, the way they broke down. Of the twenty, thirty-seven towns listed in this Hancock County, twenty-six of those thirty-seven towns and townships had over one-hundred percent people registered than there were in the counties. That cannot happen. When you hear the term dirty voter roll, that's what it's referring to. It's impossible, can't happen, yet that's what's happened in the state of Maine and other states. I'm just trying to break it down to our own level right there. So, I would like to see a, a workshop that we could really expand on some of these we've got there. Just, just the things don't add up. I'll give you this lawsuit right here. It's Sheriff Dar Leaf out of Michigan, sent to the Honorable Jim Jordan, four-page letter in Washington DC, and I'm just going to give you just two sentences, because I know it's late tonight, and I don't want to take advantage of the four minutes, I'm going to keep to three, it's got to be pretty close. I'll just give you two sentences, and then I'm going to encourage you to have that workshop so we could present a lot of evidence that I think would switch people's opinions on this. Here's what he said. "I have evidence that the US Dominion and its affiliates, Dominion instructed its employees to alter or otherwise falsify the integrity of the software and hardware in its voting machines and systems to attain certification by the Election Assistance Commission. I have evidence that the voting machines and systems are vulnerable to alteration and manipulation." That's the problem. Interference by the use of thumb drives, external devices, even an ink pen, the guy used down in Georgia before the Supreme Court, to prove that they're connected to the voting machines before, during, and after elections. So, I'd just appreciate if you guys would have, I know, I realize that I'm, you're opposed to what I'm saying right there, and I've done a lot of research on it, and I encourage you to let the public take a look at and decide for themselves. In nine minutes, we can't tell you very much, but in a good workshop that we could present out there, and again, this is nothing, I'm not trying to put anything onto Toni Dyer.
You're at four minutes, so, thank you.
Can I call Mendoni? I don't think she's a problem at all in this. It's the systems that are out there, and I think it's ignorance of what's going on. That's why we're trying to educate. I like the term education like that. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
If I may, just address some of those comments, and I would like to first say that my staff and I appreciate your support in this matter as a council. Title 21A, subsection 847-7, permits the use of tabulating machines. The city of Ellsworth signed an agreement over a decade ago to use the machines if the state authorized. We are now obligated to that agreement that we signed up for the use of these machines. The DS-200 machine maintains an audit log. Every time that machine is accessed, opened, turned on, turned off, a ballot enters, there's an audit log, can be printed at any time. There was a comment made that there was a malfunction with the machine, this was a couple of years ago while I was the city clerk, and there was a machine malfunction. And I think what people fail to realize is the highly qualified staff you have here on-site. We are all trained on these machines to deal with the minor troubles that come up, jams, cleaning the optical scanner with lens wipes and air, canned air. No differently than I'm sure all of you have, to some degree, some IT experience cleaning your own printer at home when it jams or in your office. You're not an IT professional, however, you have come accustomed to dealing with some minor deficiencies. So, that machine was rectified by our staff here on-site. I stand by that there are no modems in these machines. I will prove it, and I'm happy to have Mr. Daly come and try to attempt to connect his wireless device to our machines. I'd put my salary on it. I think it is very important to note that the user agreements, the state laws, the fact that Department of Homeland Security, CISA, Secretary of State's office, many agencies have gone through the testing for the Elections Commission to make these machines safe to the public speaks volumes. And I myself did some research, because that's what we're all doing. I chose to use none of my access as a city clerk to any of the state machines. If you do some Google searches, you can find that the census data for Hancock County is fifty-six thousand seven hundred and one out of the last census. You can also go on to the website for Secretary of State, as Counselor Smith mentioned a moment ago, to find all the voter information you'd like to have. And Hancock County has forty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine voters enrolled. I'm not sure why we're figuring out that we have more voters enrolled than we do residents, but the data that you can find readily online stands true to that. Ellsworth voter rolls, which were just brought into question, are very clean, as there are about eighty-four hundred eligible voters in Ellsworth. We have about seventy-one hundred on voter rolls. So, as far as voter rolls are concerned, our current CVR system, central voter registration, is connected to Bureau of Motor Vehicles as well as Department of Vital Statistics. So, if you go to Motor Vehicle tomorrow to update your license, you get a choice there now, as they call it, motor voter, to say, yes, I want to continue or change my enrollment to a new town, a new party, a new address. That comes to our system overnight. So, if Michelle Beal were to move out of Ellsworth, but she goes to renew her license tomorrow, and she doesn't want to tell us because she wants to be on the council still, I'm going to find out that she's moved. The same thing with, you can't hide. The same thing with vital statistics. We get these daily in my department. I can't speak for other towns and cities, but for the city of Ellsworth, my staff are required, once a week, to open our CVR system, look at those motor voter transactions that have come through, update those records as necessary, and the same with vital statistics. When a voter in Ellsworth passes away, we get what's called a pending death record in that voter system. And we have to check them thoroughly, because as you're all aware, with your neighbors and your friends, we have people that are Bob Smith, Bob Smith Jr., Bob Smith III, Bob Smith so-and-so. It'll give us the information from that vital record. We will go in and look at the actual death certificate, confirm that this voter needs to be removed from our rolls, and we do that weekly. So, I will stand by that Ellsworth has no dirty voter rolls. At any given time, there could be voter updates to be made based on vital record or relocation that we haven't received yet, but I would like to make it very clear that on a weekly basis, those voters that are going to Motor Vehicle to update their license, those that pass away or relocate, we are getting those updates, they are being maintained weekly, and I stand by our records, I stand by my staff, and our, my staff and I thank you all for your support in these matters, because we understand that they are important to voters, but they need to understand that the actual facts are in this building, not on Google necessarily. I can research medical issues all day long, but it doesn't make me a PhD.
Just because it's on YouTube doesn't mean it's right.
Yes, ma'am.
A Wiki, Wikipedia. Do you have something completely different to say? Because... Because she's providing, she's providing expert information for us. Thank you. No, but thank you very much, and, thank you. Okay. What is the will of the council?
Stop talking about this, please, forever.
Yeah, this, we're just wasting our time at this point. I'd like to, to not have a workshop. No, ma'am, no, there's no more public comment on this.
Well, she made a comment about...
She works for the city.
No, numbers that I provided, and I got them from the Secretary of State's own office. The numbers were from the office that she posts, and that's exactly how many they had.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I just make one comment? This was supposed to be a discussion, if we were going to have a workshop or not, not the workshop we just had. So, let's, could we get back to the script here?
I agree.
I move, we make a motion not to have a workshop on whatever this is.
Great, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, now, item 20, discussion in action on stipend for the interim city manager, previous interim city manager.
I think it's me. HR committee met, discussed, not met, discussed, and discussed with the rest of you briefly in executive session to make a decision about a motion for a stipend for the interim city manager, and I will just say what's really important, which is that Matt totally stepped up to the plate, given zero notice, since it was something that kind of fell in our laps and had to be decided in one night, which it was, and so he got a call at like ten o'clock at night. And we're all just really grateful that Matt stepped up to the plate, not just as a placeholder for a month, but, but really took the job seriously, walked into something that was just incredibly painful and difficult for all of us, and very painful and difficult for the staff, and supported the staff, and communicated well with us, and communicated well with Charlie, and I'm going to make a motion for a stipend of five thousand... I'm gonna make a motion for, uh, a stipend of five thousand dollars to cover this last month, and I will say that doesn't even cover all the work he actually did during that time, while he did his own job and the other job. So that's my motion, five thousand dollar stipend for the interim city manager.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item twenty-one, discussion and potential action to adopt changes to the rules of order, this is very quick, um, when we have guests and people, um, that, that we're, um, presenting awards to, um, they have to wait, it's sometimes hours before they come up, and as you saw tonight, they're standing up, um, what I'd like to do, I found out, Toni, thank you, um, at our organizational meeting, evidently, we, and I know I should know this, we set items one through nine, a- and the order of it at our organizational meeting, um, and I would ask that for the rest of this year, until our next organizational meeting, we can change the presentation of awards to, um, after the minutes, so number five, and then move everything else down accordingly, until, and then we'll, at the next organizational meeting, we can make it...
Well, I think it's, it's six in the draft.
Yep.
But you mean to make it five?
I do, yeah.
Yeah. So moved.
Is there any way we can change chairman to chairperson?
There's chair.
Or chair.
Yeah.
Yep, where is that, where are you looking?
So move to turn chairman to chair, and move to present...
I didn't get any of that.
Presentation of awards to number five, that's my motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, oh, we can do this now? It isn't required to do it in the organization, okay.
No, no, it's just, it's our organizational meeting, it's our choice, so if we want to change it, it's not by charter, it's by organizational meeting. Okay, discussion?
Just wooed.
Wooed?
Wooed.
All in favor?
And be thankful that we have enough award, awards to give out, to talk about that we need to move it up.
Exactly, yes.
That's great.
It's exciting, though, and the ones that, it's great to recognize people in our, you know, even tonight with our staff, and... Okay, item twenty-two, um, executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection four oh five six E, to consult with the attorney on a personnel matter, um, I will tell everyone that we will be coming out just to go back into executive session, because we have two of them, and there will be no action, so, you may, good night.
There will be no action on the second one, too?
No action on either one, no. These are informational.